Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, October 1st, can you believe it, 2018? Would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, just see if you guys are paying attention. Would you please call roll?
Counsel Ryan.
Here.
Counsel Freeman.
Here.
Counsel Reed.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counsel President Parsons.
Here.
Counsel Herrera.
Here.
Counsel Anderson.
Here.
And you, Counsel Ferris.
Here. Thank you very much. All right. Special Order of Business, we have noncommittee reports. I have Matt Lawyer here to report on Claggett Creek.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel staff. Just real quick, Claggett Creek Watershed Council is back underway. Had our first general meeting last month. We're meeting again this Wednesday, going to be doing some planning for the year coming up, including what we've added on to is a Park Service Day with the middle school, both middle schools and the high school. We're expecting about 100 kids to come out and help out with that, so we're really excited. Doing some long-range planning for the Soggy Day in the Park, which wasn't soggy 2.0, probably in April.
No it wasn't, it was gorgeous.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day. So we're really looking forward to that. Little minor tweaks in terms of location on that, but still down at Kaiser Rapids. Other than that, we will be at the Kaiser Fire District's open house next week, in addition to Kaiser Fire District and Public Works is there, but we're going to be on the fire side again this year like we have been traditionally. Maybe looking to go to the public works side next year, but it's really about it. Just really excited to hit the ground running, do some projects that we've done, looking forward to in the spring again, doing the cleanup here. We'll follow up with more details on that as it gets closer, but continuing the good work. We got a couple new people on board and really excited to do some fun projects in our watershed this year, so.
And do you have a website where? You have a website, right?
Insert caption. No, it's, our Facebook is the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, and I believe that our website is claggittcwc.com or .org. I should know that, but I don't. Yeah, Facebook's a little bit easier, so. Other than that, unless there's any questions, that's about what we've got going on right now.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions on the Claggett Creek Watershed Council? Appreciate the work. All right. I was wrong, and that makes two, so if anybody's keeping score. I do have a special presentation, and I want to present to the city manager on behalf of the League of Oregon Cities and CIS, which is City-County Insurance, the Silver Safety Award to the city of Kaiser, injury frequency rate of 0.84 in fiscal year 1718 with 114 full-time employees. This is something that they keep track of each year in order to honor cities and acknowledge the work that is done to create a safe workplace for all of the employees and encourage wellness among the employees. So, congratulations and well done.
Appreciate it, thank you.
The funny part is that we get to go to the reception and so forth, and they're the ones who do all the work. So, I'm not sure how we figured that one out, but I think that they need something to particularly thank you guys for the work that you do in keeping one another safe. I also wanted to acknowledge that Matt Lawyer did submit an award for excellence for the city of Kaiser to the League of Oregon Cities, and while we were beat out by independents for their fabulous project, I want to thank him for that nomination and that, you know, we are doing great work here, and we're proud to be able to let people know in the state know about that. So with that, that will take us then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled for tonight, and based on the stack I have, everyone is here to talk about Agenda Item 8C. I don't have, if I miss that you're here to talk about something else, please raise your hand so I can pull you out of order. So here's how this is going to roll, just so you know. Each person has five minutes. You'll need to be at the table, and the reason is that this is also televised, so people who are watching need to be able to hear you and see you, as well as those of us here. What we're going to do is try to listen to everybody, so I would encourage counsel to take notes on the things that you have comments and questions about, so that we can address them in our deliberation, unless you have something that you absolutely need to ask of the person speaking. Is that acceptable to the council?
No.
Okay. So, if you have signs or anything else, what we would ask you to do is be on the sides with those if you so choose, because we want to make sure that the view of the people behind you is not obstructed, and to make sure that everybody can see anything that you have as well. So, this would help make sure that we're all included in the conversation, so if that, if everybody understands that, okay? So with that, we're going to get started. This is completely random. I, nobody wrote on here, I'm in favor, I'm opposed, up or down, so we're just going to have a conversation, all right? So first up is Jose Dominguez. Like I said, this is random. So if you would come on down, all we ask is that you give your name and your city of residence, and the time is yours. Thank you, Pastor.
Yes, my name is Jose Dominguez. I'm a resident here in Kaiser for 25 years, but I'm also a pastor in the community, and I represent people in my fellowship who are citizens, and I also represent an undocumented community. And so, we are teaching them to be good citizens, to love the city, to love their neighbors, to love their communities. And just some background information, the last two years, our fellowship has helped five families get their residency, and we've got, we've got two families that have become citizens of the United States through some programs that we've been running in our, in our, in our congregation. And so, I'm here to talk about 105, and I'm, and I'm here to talk about my job as a pastor and what we're doing in our community, and we're teaching, we're teaching our church members to obey the laws of Kaiser. We're, we're teaching them to become productive residences, residents of our community. We're also teaching them to respect authority, to participate in their community, to be involved in their schools. And so today, I'm just, I'm, I'm here because our church believes in the, in the contribution of community, where we are providing a service, we're providing, we're helping undocumented communities live here, as well as respect this community. I'm also a leader of a community program here, or a community group here, that, you know, we, we have tried for years to try to bridge gaps between Latinos and Anglos, and we're trying to bring those two groups together. We, we believe and we, we understand that there are some, there are some differences. There's some differences in culture, traditions, language, but we believe in working together in peace, we believe in working together in unity, in community, and, and work towards a better quality of life. Today, I, I stand here in, in opposition to 105, to Measure 105. I, in good conscience, I cannot support 105, just simply because I am serving, and I am teaching, and I am preaching to a community of undocumented people that I serve. I believe that this law would create fear in our community, I think it would create mistrust in our community, it would create division in our community, and it would create a us and them mentality, which I think we're far beyond that. I think this law, if passed, would put a strain on our, on our police force resources. They would have a greater responsibility, which could lead to racial profiling. You know, people like me who am brown-skinned and I've got black hair, they might think I'm undocumented, they might pull me over and, and, and deport me. I, I hope not, but that could be a possibility. This would lead to racial profiling again, and that would affect all the Latinos. That would, that would affect Latinos in Kaiser, it would affect ethnic groups, and I think that this goes against the values and the beliefs of our fellowship. I believe in the great city of Kaiser. I've lived here for 25 years. I've got, I've got one minute. To be, to be exclusive of people, I think that's not the way to go. I think we need to be inclusive of all peoples, of all races, of all languages, and I, and I think we need to, we need to, we need to really, really think about that. So, I come to you, Mayor, City Council, I ask you tonight to search your hearts, to search your conscience, to search your values, and I ask you to, to vote no on 105. I think 105 would be, would be bad for the city of, of Kaiser, and so, I, I think that we need to re, revisit that, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Yes, ma'am? We do have, we do have, okay.
Oh, questions?
All right, we do have one question.
Yeah, I want.
Okay. Yes.
Pastor Dominguez, I was, part of this discussion, it always comes up, well, they should just obey the law, and I was wondering if you could help us understand, number one, what it takes to be here legally as a resident, not even as a citizen, but as a resident, and why so many people are unable to do that?
Well, it takes a lot of hard work, first of all, to be here. It takes a lot of hard work. Once you come here as an undocumented family, you, first you have to find out whether you qualify to, to be able to be a resident. Once we determine that, then we're able to help them with English classes, with preparation, able to help the families here to be able to understand the, the blessing and the privilege that we have as citizens of, of the United States and Kaiser here.
And how do they determine who is eligible?
I, I don't work for the immigration.
Okay.
I just, I just try to...
So that is something that they would need to get immigration lawyers for in order to figure out, or how do they?
Well, generally, there are immigration lawyers that, that I have some that I recommend. First, we need to know whether the, whether the families qualify for what is called residency, which means it's a pathway, it's a pathway to citizenship. Regarding the laws that are available on the books today, as a pastor, I see families that I work with that are undocumented, that don't have an opportunity for residency.
So, am I understanding you correctly in that this is such a complicated thing, who qualifies for residency, who doesn't, that pretty much only lawyers can, can really determine that? And so for the, to expect common people to understand who qualifies for residency, who does not, is rather unreasonable.
As you may know, City Councilman Laura Reed, being an attorney requires the knowledge of, of understanding the laws, and immigration law is, is a very complicated, it's a very complicated process. The laws are changing constantly, the requirements are changing, and yes, we would have to refer to people who know the law.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, first of all, I appreciate all your good work in the community that you do. I know you do a lot, and I, I don't want that to go unnoticed, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I guess my question to you would be, well, first it was, it sounds like you're helping people try to become legal citizens, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that would be a priority, but I'd like to know who's the voice for the victims, whether they're illegal or not, there's still several victims. So do you represent those victims? Are you helping them? Do you provide services for victims as well? Because there's two sides of that coin, so I'd like to know if you're working with both sides.
In the, in the work that I do, I, I find that I have to be kind of neutral because of compassion and because of the human need, and so I understand the victim's side. I can only speak for the, the community that, at this point, I have in my congregation. At this point, I haven't run into any, any, or I haven't worked with any victims, but I would be more than willing to, to work and help. I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate your time. Mr. Si Smith? Come on down, and if you would just give your name and your city of residence for the record. And just for folks who aren't familiar with the buttons, green means you're within your time limit, the yellow comes on when you have one minute to go. All right? The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Si Smith. I reside at 2514 Hazel Avenue Northeast. I'm on the fringe of Salem. However, for a while, I was the closest member to Salem Mennonite Church, and as such, I have been deeply involved in Southeast Kaiser and its neighborhood association. And Carl Newswanger, our pastor, so I'm, I'm a member of that flock, and we realized that we had space and that there might be community, and so we threw open the Friday Night Community Center, and people came. If you build it, they will come. Catholic Community Services helped that, and initial turnout started at a count of 20, and it built and built, as a community started to grow around it. I've been serving that community for about a quarter century, a little less, and I have seen it grow substantially. Community has been the effort, I'm sorry. So, late this November into December, it'll be two years since everything changed, and what happened is that suddenly our membership dropped by 30 percent. Boom. Where'd they go? Okay? And what we found out, little research, was a lot of those families walked a long ways through Kaiser to get to Salem Mennonite. They walked all the way from this neighborhood down there, but suddenly they became afraid to come out, period. And that has only grown and multiplied. So last year, I got on the bandwagon and I printed up an awful lot of materials to help distribute within that community, in terms of what to do if ICE is at your door, how do you act? How should you be prepared? Here's the number of lawyer. Here's your actions if this custody thing happens. If it happens in an automobile, na, 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 na. Okay? So that 30 percent drop has increased, and increased 50 percent, and now we're down to about a third. We had numbers of 80 or 90 participants every Friday night, and now it's down to a standard 20 percent. We don't really ask if they're documented or undocumented. That's not, not our position. We have a longstanding, in the community, of being of assistance. We provided the place for a lot of the planning for the community for Claggett Creek and Weddell. We then also started tutoring services, and still do for those students. Most of them are Hispanic. We too have a language barrier and, and struggle with that. But we also have ample dual-language people who have been on missions everywhere, me included, at any rate. So, the community is fractured. To kind of answer your questions, they are afraid to step foot into that process, and it's very hard to get them out of that shell. I went to school in Puebla, Mexico for, for a while, and, and got some insight into that community, and see how some of the struggles they're going through here compared to there.
One minute.
Okay, so there's this continual sense of trying to build and hold together community. That's been substantially fractured, and so I'm, I'm hoping you'll help vote no on 105.
Thank you, sir. Are, any, any burning questions? All right. Thank you so much for sharing with us tonight. Dennis Koho. Thank you for clarifying.
Did you inhale?
He did inhale.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, there were some comments that seemed to suggest that, that needing or using an attorney for services with the government is a bad thing. I don't think so, having been an attorney for a number of years. I think it's absolutely a good thing. There are some types of law, and this has been one of them, where a person could get theoretically trained enough to, to give sound advice. It wouldn't be legal to do so, because you've got to be a member of the bar to give legal advice, but I remember at one time, there was a van that used to park in Kaiser and, and give advice on immigration for folks that needed it. So anyway, attorneys can be good things. I just have to remind people that when I get the opportunity. I too am here urging you to support the, the request for a no vote on 106. I was, 105? I have the wrong glasses on, and I can't, sorry. That's the optometrist's fault, and the dog ate my agenda, so. Where was I?
All right.
I was, in my first term as mayor, I think, when the Oregon Citizens Alliance came to town with the amendment for our charter, and we had that campaign, and that was not a fun thing to go through. I, I think I was the only person on the council that would go to the, the various gay rights campaigns and, and gatherings, and the rest of the council, I think, supported what, what the initiative was at the time, and I'd like to see us kind of reverse that by, by adopting this resolution tonight. I, I think it did nothing but kind of tear the, the community apart at the time, and this has the opportunity to do that same thing again, and you have a chance to fix it, and I hope you do. It's a difficult issue, and I understand that, but good people, as you've heard a few already, have, have done some good work in this town to bring us together and to help people comply with law, where, where compliance is both possible and, and necessary, and I think adopting this resolution is another step forward to help them do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counsel Reed.
I, I just wanted to clarify that my, my questions earlier were, were not meant to disparage lawyers in any way, but rather to point out how very complicated this is, and the fact that it is, as Pastor Dominguez says, that it is constantly changing, and it, it requires, it requires a, a body of knowledge to be able to, to navigate.
Yeah.
And so that was the purpose of my question, is just to point out how complicated it is, and the fact that they need a lawyer is, the fact that they use lawyers is a good thing, but the fact that they can only do this through lawyers is, is a barrier.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right, then. The lawyer has to be a member of the federal bar. It's not just the Oregon bar, but you have to go up and sign up and get sworn into the, in Portland or Eugene. So, and, and it can be expensive. I mean, I'm sure if Rich Walsh or I were doing it, it would not be particularly expensive, but I've heard of people charging, charging clients in thousands and thousands of dollars, so. We'll find a way to do it on contingency, so. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate the time.
All right, thank you, and I want to acknowledge, you did state it, but for the record, so people know that Dennis Koho is the, was the third mayor of Kaiser, so thank you for your continued service to our community.
Thanks. It's a little weird being on this side of the microphone.
We'll find out. All right. Cindy Rico. Come on down, and just give us your name and your city of residence, and the time is yours.
My name is Cindy. I grew up here in Kaiser. I moved here when I was little. I went to Weddell, Claggett, graduated from McNary in 2015. So, I have been living in Kaiser for most of my life. I'm here on behalf of not only myself, but also on behalf of the many people of color living in Kaiser that could not be here tonight, because the information regarding, you know, these meetings does not reach their neighborhoods. I am not here, I mean, sorry, I am here to urge the Kaiser City Council to endorse voting no on Measure 105. Let me begin by saying that this measure is not only supported by flat-out white supremacists, but it also clearly supports the further criminalization and terrorizing of communities of color. It would only worsen and alter the racial profiling that already exists and be an absolute abuse of power. Your support on voting no on Measure 105 is necessary. I urge you to follow the steps of the Salem City Council, the local businesses in the area, and the millions of people who are supporting voting no on this toxic measure. As city council members, it is a slap in the face and ultimately reckless to ignore this measure due to the negative effects it would cause to the many community members living in Kaiser. You know, we can paint a mural on the side of the local bowling alley, throw a couple brown people on it, and scream, "We are diverse, we are a community," but I need proof, we need proof, I, we need action. This is your chance to live up to your role and promote unity throughout Kaiser. And I know what some of you are going to say, "Oh, the Salem-Kaiser School Board decided not to take a stance," but look at the outrage that that caused and learn from it. I'm going to tell you what I told them. Those who fake their worry and remain neutral in situations of injustice are extremely harmful. Neutrality and being silent is violence. A vote for Measure 105 means a vote, an ultimate vote for racism and white supremacy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We do have a question. Can you hold on for one second? Counsel Freeman has a question for you.
Thank you for your testimony. I have a question. I know in your opening statement, you said that there are people that could not be here today because the information does not reach their neighborhoods. So how could we reach those neighborhoods?
Maybe being more, expanding the language that you guys offer, maybe interpreters, I don't know, maybe through schools, because I know that, growing up, I never, I didn't even know about these until I started going to college and getting involved in, in the community, so, yeah.
So, I would like to follow up on that, and as you think of ideas on ways that we can continue to improve our community outreach, this is an ongoing issue community-wide, and we're always looking for recommendations and ways that we can better get information throughout our community. This is not just folks you know. This is not just folks you know that aren't aware, but this is an ongoing challenge for all of us in every sector that we work in, some of us that work for public agencies as well. So, I would ask if you would please grab one of our cards and if, as you have ideas on recommendations, things that you think of later on that you could share with us, would you please send those in an email?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dave McCall.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Dave McCall. I live here in, here in Kaiser. Our government was founded on the principle of federalism. This is a system in which there are shared and separate powers between the national government and regional governments. Shared powers such as taxation and spending money, and separate powers such as national defense is provided by the federal government, while there are reserved powers to the states. These reserved powers are education, health and welfare, and local law enforcement. The national government provides defense from foreign powers and protection of our borders. Likewise, our states provide education and enforcement of our local laws, such as theft, traffic, burglary. These things are not enforced through the federal government. The problem with Proposition 105 is that our local law enforcement for our communities becomes part of the federal enforcement. I highly doubt that the founders of this country envisioned state and local governments subsidizing the federal government. It is strange that those who argue for limited government and constitutionalism ignore this factor. Also, local law enforcement works best when there is trust between the enforcement and the people in its community. By instituting a threat of arrest to someone who is a victim of a crime makes that person not only distrustful of community police and therefore makes them less likely to report a crime. It maintains victimization. People who are victims should be able to receive justice from our police and our courts. They deserve this basic human dignity. Measure 105 removes that dignity. The history of human dignity in our country has not been a perfect one. From chattel slavery to women's voting rights, it has been a history of overcoming these issues and call for inclusive human dignity. There is one thing we can learn from our country's history, that those who have denied human dignity to others have been assigned to the trash heap of history. Lincoln said that we should listen to the better nature, better angels of our nature. I urge all to listen to their better angels and put 105 in the trash heap. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Sandra Hernandez. Before you get started, if people are arriving late and they see, I know we shut the doors because of the noise from the lobby, can we prop it a little bit so people know that everybody's welcome to continue to come in if they so choose? Thank you, I appreciate it. Sandra, the floor is yours. You have five minutes. If you would just start with your name and your city of residence.
Yeah, my name is Sandra Hernandez, and I reside in Salem, but I work with youth from Kaiser. And I'm also the director of Latinos Unidos Siempre, a youth-led organization based in Salem-Kaiser. My position has given me the privilege to work with some of the brightest, most intelligent and brave youth in the Salem-Kaiser district, who majorly come from first-generation immigrant families of color. Half of the youth that I have the privilege to work with live and attend, live and attend school in Kaiser. These same youth who have provided their leadership to bring about positive change in their communities face daily systemic social and social racism in their schools, their community, and also by law enforcement. As a brown woman and as a first-generation immigrant who has grown up and worked in this community, I am, I can fully relate to these experiences. Because whether you believe it or not, racism is a reality that is grounded in this nation's history and present in today's institutions. Having had a sanctuary status for over 30 years has shown that Oregon, as a collective state, stands for inclusion and fairness. The very existence of the sanctuary policy acknowledges that racism and xenophobia are a real thing. And for those of you who don't know what xenophobia means, it's fear of those that are foreign. When a sanctuary status is no longer needed is when those issues are eradicated, when those issues no longer exist. So, the sanctuary law, unlike opponents of it often state, is not a shield to protect crime. On the contrary, it has helped maintain a level of trust in local law enforcement. When we as brown and black people do calls to report crime, we, like our white neighbors, expect to be protected. If Measure 105 passes, this will make us feel targeted, not protected. Whether our local law enforcement wants to or not, it will make them a tool for Trump's deportation machine. As a city council, you have the power to ensure that your city values of inclusivity and fairness are reflected in your systems. And as a city council, you have the power to protect those who, that reside in the city and to assure that they feel included. As a city council, you have the duty to ensure that our community feels protected and not targeted. We don't want to hear that individual city councils will vote no. We want to, we want to hear that a council as a collective will stand systemically against this issue. So, I urge you to endorse no on Measure 105. It cannot be said enough how anti-immigrant and how racist this measure is. And one last thing, very important fact, but according to the Poverty Law Center, the group that proposed and organized to get this measure passed for November's ballot, for this November's election, is recognized as an anti-immigrant hate group. So, the people you serve will be expecting an answer that reflects the real collective values of the city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you very much for sharing. And I appreciate the expression through signs, but just make sure that the people behind you also are able to see. So, we appreciate that. You're welcome to be on the side if you wish to hand, if you wish to hold them up, okay? So, on the side. Thank you very much. Greg Zerbrug.
Hello, my name is Greg Zerbrug. I've been a resident of Kaiser for 24 years. This is my first city council meeting.
Well, welcome. What took you so long?
Well, I will say Measure, or Resolution on Voting No is what brought me forth. I cannot sit on the sidelines forever, so I just want to urge you to vote no, to support a no vote on Measure 105. My wife and I have been fortunate enough to help several Latino men move from being undocumented to, onto a pathway towards citizenship. And I've also taught citizenship classes to a Latino community in Newburgh. And I, it's my personal belief that Measure 105 is part of a larger ethnic cleansing that's going on in the United States. I find it outrageous, and I do not want our city participating in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Zerbrug? Thank you so much. And don't be a stranger. Rich Walsh. We're gonna talk about those fees that the other lawyer is quoting for you? Five minutes.
Please.
All right, has it started yet?
When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute.
All right. We'll give him his time.
All right, so counsel, mayor, members of the council and staff, I do know that I could talk, my name is Richard Walsh, I'm a resident of Kaiser. I'm also an attorney here in Kaiser. I'm a former city councillor in Kaiser. And I could spend my whole five minutes talking about just Measure 105, but I, a lot of these wonderful people have already talked about it, a lot of the pros and cons. I want to talk about something I'm pretty darn sure no one else is gonna talk about, and I want to talk about Resolution 2003 1391. And that's the resolution that we passed in the height of the, it happened in the time of the Iraqi war, shock and awe, and all these councils all over the country were starting to pass resolutions against the war, some of them were supporting the war. Councils were becoming divided, becoming partisan. We saw the tide coming. We were worried about it. So, we've been here before with these types of issues. We've had people come to us on abortion issues with, you know, over the years, we want to support or not to support that, people coming to us with gay marriage issues and things like that, things that we really have no direct involvement with, and tears the council apart. And so, we basically passed that resolution. It's in your, in your staff report, I think. And that resolution basically says, "We're not getting involved in that stuff." And so, I came here today because I saw a Facebook post that basically was trying to make that argument that, hey, you can't get involved in this stuff because it's gonna be a slippery slope, you're gonna end up arguing every single federal issue, every single state issue, every single candidate, every single ballot measure. And what I'm here to say is that, you know, when we were there, when we wrote that ballot, when we wrote that resolution, was that, yes, there are limitations. It's not a slippery slope. It's a very small and narrow area that you really should give these kind of resolutions to. And those areas are very specifically laid out. And there are two very big exceptions to the not getting involved. And the first one is if it affects city operations, the policing, or public policy that we have in this city. And we, and that first, first note is met in this case because we have a city policy of public policing, of community policing, been going on for decades, and we've been trying to get the Hispanic community to engage with the police. We want them to be our witnesses, we want them to be their eyes and ears in the city. We have been, we've been talking to them for literally decades to try to get the entire community to report crimes, to report when they're victims and to report when other people, when they see victims. Now, as an attorney, I've had a lot of dealings with undocumented witnesses. And I can tell you that they're scared to death, they don't want to come forward, they don't want to be involved, they want to help, but they're scared. And I spend a great deal of time telling them about Oregon's statute, saying that, no, no one is gonna question you, if you don't do anything wrong, if you don't break the law, no one's gonna question you on your immigration status if you come to court and testify. Because we have a law, we have protections in Oregon that keep that from being a trap, from being a place where witnesses come and get trapped by the police, or by the DA, or by an insurance company who wants to intimidate witnesses. So, we get people to come testify because of that law. 105 will take that law away. And I believe that those witnesses will all disappear into the woodwork, and our community police efforts that we've done to bring those witnesses out will all scatter, scatter in the wind, and it'll be, it'll set us back decades. So, I think on that, on that city, just on the basic pragmatic, we want to fight crime, you know, I mean, we talk about illegal aliens as a crime thing, it is. Because if you do this kind of, if this ballot measure passes, we're gonna have much more difficulty fighting crime, because no one's gonna talk. They're gonna be scared to death, and rightfully so, because they'll be afraid that they'll be taken out. The other thing I want to say, minute thirty-two. Okay. So, I'm gonna skip a few things, but anyway, ironically, where we need, and Counselor Ryan, you were talking about, what about the victims, the other side of the story? There are some illegal aliens that commit crime. But I'm telling you that the number-one way that we can catch those criminals is through community policing and to talk to their friends and their relatives and other people that are undocumented to turn them in. They don't like crime either. They're family people, and they're doing, they're living and breathing and working and teaching and parenting in this community, and they don't like crime either. Anyway, okay, the second exception, there's another exception, and that is it affects Kaiser residents. And I don't mean to affect them in the general way, like it affects everybody out there, you know, not like the war, it was the example we had, the shock and awe, but it affects them in a very personal, very direct way. And I think that it also meets that as well. You'll hear a lot of testimony about the humanitarian issues. But what I want to talk about, again, because I'm familiar with the witness issue, is that when people don't even want to go to the hospital because they're afraid of being turned in, because they're afraid the police might come and question them, because they do, police will question the person who's been stabbed, right? And they're gonna ask questions, and they're gonna say, "Who did this?" Imagine their fear, if they realistically have a fear that if they have that visit to the hospital, they're gonna be asked about their immigration status and sent home. Guess what? A lot of victims won't go to the, won't go to the hospital, won't be interviewed by police. And the humanitarian issue alone is huge, which is an issue you can take under Section 2, but the police issue is even bigger with the Section 1.
Beautiful. All right, hang on.
Any questions?
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you for your passionate testimony, because I do appreciate it. And we're friends, let's, for the record, mistake for the record, no.
Yes, I am President Lee M. Ryan.
Yes, and I adore you, and I love the diversity of our opinions and discussions that we have. That being said, I want to, first of all, make very clear that I believe, and hear this often, that our police in Kaiser do an excellent job working with our community. And I don't want anyone to undermine that or think that there is anything different happening, because there's not. Our police are extremely ethical and hardworking and very, very communicative with all of our community, no matter race or gender. That being said, I've worked with a lot of domestic violence. And so, it's kind of a good, a good opportunity to say, we have victims, for example, who are domestic violence victims, that are afraid to report, not because they're illegal, but because maybe their spouse is, or something like that. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sides to that coin. And I guess I would just ask, you know, personally, have you ever been a victim of a crime from an illegal immigrant or illegal undocumented immigrant? Have you personally?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you very much. And I appreciate your testimony.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you very much. You just give your name and your city of residence for the record, and the time is yours.
My name is Catherine Stone, and Kaiser is my city of residence for about 20 years now. I came tonight, this is the first time I've been to a committee meeting. And I came because I heard there was a resolution by the city council to vote no on Measure 105, which surprised me because it seemed unnecessary in the first place, because it's a measure that's already on the ballot, and everyone gets to vote however they want. Yes or no?
Everybody.
Everybody. This measure was put on the ballot through a legal democratic process. And I, you know, we've heard all the arguments on every side. I'm just here to make a statement, and thank you for all of your service, I do appreciate it. We have 18 sheriffs who support Measure 105. That's half of all the county sheriffs in Oregon. And I don't think it's an abuse of power to enforce the law. And I am going to vote yes on Measure 105. And I think I'm okay to vote Measure 105 because I get to, because it's a democratic process, and I can do that without being accused of being a racist. This is my state, I was born and raised in it also. I also have rights, and I have a right to vote any way I want. I thought that the city council here was representing all of those of us who are citizens in Kaiser. So, I thought you'd be neutral about these things, since we all do get to vote however we want. So, it surprised me, since you serve all of us, that you would not be neutral. And anyway, that's all I have to say. And so, if you are going to have this resolution, then I would urge you to support Measure 105 and vote yes on it, as I am going to. And as I said, we've already heard all the arguments on every side, we've heard them repeated here tonight, so I'm not going to go into all of that for you here tonight. And obviously, I seem to be outnumbered, so I think that's all I'll say. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Stone? Thank you for joining us tonight. And again, don't be a stranger.
From here on out, I don't think I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mike DeBlossi. Okay, Mike de Blasio.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff. My name is Mike de Blasio, and I'm a resident of Kaiser. First, I want to thank you for even having this discussion. Some people have said it's not the council's place, but I think it is. So let's be honest, if we were talking about people who came from countries that had names like Epley, or Freeman, or Clark, there would be no Measure 105. And it's been 100 years since someone whose last name was de Blasio had to worry about things like that. There's a famous quote on the Statue of Liberty, "But bring us, you're tired, you're poor, you're hungry." It doesn't have an asterisk on it. It doesn't say which countries those people have to be from. And when our ancestors, you know, we hear all the time, why don't they just get in line like the rest of them, like the rest of our ancestors? Well, our ancestors didn't have a line. They just got off the boat, went processing, and moved wherever they moved. The American promise is that if you came here, you work hard and make America better, you are an American. And we must have a full-throated affirmation of that ideal. And that's why I'm here telling you or asking you to please pass the resolution to support no on Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. de Blasio? Thank you very much. Carol Dorfler.
Good evening, council staff, mayor. I have two hats. This is the Carol Dorfler hat, and I urge you to vote no on 105. I also have Kathy Filbrick's hat, and she asked, she couldn't be here this evening, and she asked me to bring this letter and read it to you. Dear Kaiser, Mayor Clark, and Kaiser City Council, following the outstanding example of the state of Oregon, Portland, and Salem, the Kaiser City Council should vote to defiantly oppose Measure 105. The city of Kaiser and residents will benefit by not increasing the police workload to include arresting immigrants. We have families who have lived in our city for years, contributing to the workforce and to their neighborhoods. Most of their children are legal United States citizens. They should not have to live in fear of being deported by local police. That threat to these families causes a serious breakdown in communications with the police, with the police, city officials, and school district that limits best practices, decisions, and policy. A healthy, functioning community is in touch with and supports all its residents. While teaching at McNary High School, I met many outstanding Hispanic students, both in my classroom and in after-school activities. The majority of our students-run LA Marathon team were Hispanics. They all successfully ran the 26.2 miles. Their parents were rightly very proud of their daughters and sons. At a post-race celebration in Kaiser, the entire families came. Mothers had tears of pride when we talked about the marathon and students' achievements. Integrated within my classes were an English-as-a-second-language group of students. They were well-behaved, enthusiastic participants who worked with a clear focus. At times, my assignments were particularly challenging, especially for students with English as their second language. In one major project, they were assigned to write and illustrate a multi-part story, and then formally present it orally while concurrently displaying the visuals they illustrated to the entire class of about 40 students. A Kaiser Times reporter came to my class and wrote, and wrote about it. The Hispanic students were so successful, they presented twice, once to my class and once to the entire ESL staff and student program. A parent's fear of deportation transfers directly to their children and to their children's success in school. One day in my classroom, a normally diligent student was uncharacteristically sitting despondently, and I asked him if something was wrong. He said his uncle was deathly ill in Mexico, and his mother was extremely worried. Naively, I responded that she should go to see her brother. My student said his mother was afraid. Meanwhile, the U.S. government is housing hundreds of children in tents in Texas with no school provided. And that is a quote from the New York Times, September 30, 2018. Kaiser should not add to the problem by abdicating its responsibility to provide a safe place for children to learn and families to thrive. Following the commandment, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. The city of Kaiser should oppose Measure 105 and boldly support Oregon's policy that state and local police forces within the state do not arrest people solely due to their immigrant status. And it's signed Kathy Filbrick. And I believe you all have copies.
We do have copies here, and Tracy's going to make sure that that's included in the record as well.
Yes.
Are there any questions for Carol Dorfler, nor the proxy for Kathy Filbrick? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Alex Sosa. So if you would introduce yourself with your name and your city of residence, each of you, and then you have five minutes. Are you going to be together or separate?
I'm not speaking.
Okay, you are not speaking, okay. All right. Could you pull the microphone a little closer to you, so people can just bend it down? Perfect.
My name is Alex. I live in Kaiser.
And your name?
My name is Duni, and I live in Kaiser, too.
Hello, my name is Alex. I'm an eighth grader, and I live and go to school in Kaiser. I'm here to urge you, my city council, to vote no on Measure 105. This measure comes out to hate racism, and I want the city that I live in to stand against hate and racism. I want my mother to feel safe when she takes me to school, when she gets, when she goes to work, and when we have doctor appointments. I would really like to know, do I seem important to you? To you because I'm brown? Less, okay, sorry. Do I seem less important to you because I'm brown, or because my family is an immigrant? I hope not. I hope that you see me and my family as important as any other family who lives in Kaiser. This measure passes and becomes a law. I want to know that my city council representatives decide to act and ensure that our local resources will not be used to put innocent people in cages. Help Kaiser students stay focused in school by helping us and our families feel safe in the streets and our, in our homes.
Thank you very much. And I'm proud of you for finding your voice as a student. Well done. Does anybody have any questions for this young man? Councillor Herrera.
I want to compliment you guys for being young men and speaking out to what you believe, no matter what. So it's very encouraging to me, who work with young men like you do, and I think I know this older one, but I just appreciate you taking a stand and getting involved, no matter what your position is. Just being here is really cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Not a lot of kids that have the presence to be able to do that. Okay, we have Cindy Swainey, Robert Glasgow, and Carol Dorfler. Are you tag-teaming? All right.
We're going to follow the same model. I'm sure you're supportive.
Okay. We have one speaker, one moral support. If you both introduce yourselves and your city of residence, I would appreciate it.
I'm Cindy Swainey. I live in Kaiser.
Robert Glasgow. I live in Kaiser as well.
All right.
Tell them who you are.
I'm Carol Dorfler. I live in Kaiser.
All right.
I'm a friend of hers.
All right. Five minutes, the floor is yours.
About a year and a half ago, my fellow concerned residents and I came forward with a proposal for an inclusivity resolution for Kaiser to be a safe and inclusive city for all. So it should be no surprise that we're here again to say that Kaiser needs a city resolution to say no on 105. Every single individual who lives in, works in, shops in, and/or visits Kaiser should know and feel that they are truly welcomed and safe here. Some say that the council has no business getting involved with a resolution to say no. But a resolution is a belief statement. According to the Oregon Blacks Law Dictionary, a resolution, generally speaking, is simply an expression of the opinion or mind of the official body politic. A resolution usually deals with matters of a special or temporary character, and can be used to persuade other legislative bodies, state, federal, other counties, or municipalities to adopt legislation that is necessary or beneficial beyond the jurisdiction of the local body. Our city's motto, motto's first two words are pride and spirit. Does 105 embody the pride and spirit of Kaiser? I say no. 105 does not embody the character of Kaiser. It doesn't benefit us, our surrounding communities, statewide or federally. It seems that a resolution to say no on 105 is an expression of the mind of our official body politic, our city council, and exactly what our council should pursue. Our resolutions should reflect our pride and our spirit. I say a resolution is exactly the kind of involvement our city council needs to be in, especially when it directly relates to the recent happenings in our city. I have lost count how many friends and coworkers have been told to go back to Mexico, or similar statements of hate within city limits. And then the horrible attack on our fellow Kaiser resident, who is in his own front yard, and verbally and then physically attacked. To him, I say, I am so sorry this happened. I am so sorry that a fellow resident felt empowered to do this. This is the exact reason why Oregon became a sanctuary state in 1971, because of a similar act of racial profiling. I know an inclusivity resolution, or a resolution to say no on 105, will not put compassion into a hateful heart. However, I would expect my city leaders to be the example of inclusion and the pursuit of justice for all, including racial justice. As Dr. King said, "It may be true that the law cannot change the heart, but it can restrain the heartless. It may be true that the law cannot make a man love me, but it can keep him from lynching me." And I think that's a pretty important idea. So there is a need for executive orders. There is a need for judicial decrees. There is a need for civil rights legislation on the local scale within states and on the national scale from the federal government. That was in 1963. There is absolutely no reason for voting yes on 105 unless you think a person should be judged by the color of their skin. I hope my city will take a stand against this kind of hate and stand with love. Those of us voting no on 105 stand with love. Our groups are not listed as extremist hate groups by the Southern Poverty Law Center, like those that started 105. Voting yes to 105 is to stand with hate. Voting no on 105 is to stand with love. I want to thank our leaders and legislators that are speaking up right now to say no on 105. And my votes in November for city councils, legislators, commissioners, and all candidates will be for those who say no to 105 now. I'll be voting no on 105, and I look forward to looking, to working with all of you on the next step, our inclusivity resolution. Please pass this resolution to say no on 105, council members, with respect. Please vote no on 105, everyone watching this, and please vote love, not hate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Swainey? All right, thank you so much, and thank you for your patience. Okay, batting cleanup before I read into the record, or at least reference into the record, some of the emails we've gotten. Levy Arera Lopez. Did I pronounce your name correctly? Well, that one I know how to pronounce.
Good evening. Levy Arera Lopez.
And if you would just give your name, your city of residence, and the time is yours.
Thank you. So again, my name is Levy Arera Lopez. I am a resident of Salem, but I come to you as a graduate of McNary High School, a very proud graduate of McNary High School. You've heard, actually, from one of my teachers, just a couple of speakers before. Also, I have family members who are Kaiser residents, and I am also executive director of the Mano Mano Family Center, and we serve about 118 families who are residents of Kaiser. Also, before I go on with, I want to also say that I had the pleasure of serving on the Safe Routes to School Task Force. So I'm very glad to see that that is getting out to the communities, that the residents of Kaiser could benefit from that. But I am here tonight to support your decision and to encourage a vote of no on Measure 105. I want to be clear about what, what I feel that supporters of Measure 105 are advocating. They're advocating that local law enforcement be empowered to detect and apprehend persons who have committed no violation of law other than being undocumented immigrants. In effect, they're advocating for Kaiser police officers, maybe even city staff, to be empowered in this manner. Yet, I feel they're hiding their true intention behind process and trying to appeal to you by saying that this is none of your business as a city. But if Measure 105 passes, they may be the ones coming back to you, advocating either privately, behind the scenes, or publicly, for, for you and for our police department to take those steps. I don't believe every supporter of Measure 105 is racist. But as has been mentioned before, it is a fact that the group who sponsored this measure has been listed as a hate group. This measure is also misleading. Someone also mentioned that we should be enforcing the law. Well, in the 30-plus years since ORS 181A.820, which is the statute that Measure 105 seeks to repeal, in those more than three decades that this has been law, hundreds, if not, if not thousands of undocumented immigrants who threaten the safety of all Oregonians have been removed from this country, a result of coordination between local law enforcement and federal authorities. Our current statute allows for that to happen. And unfortunately, many undocumented immigrants who have committed no crimes, other than, like a parking violation, have also been caught up in that system. That's a topic for another, for another night. But I also find that the implication is that local law enforcement is willingly letting go of people who are committing crimes because they're undocumented. That is not the case. I find that insulting, honestly, to the, to the commitment of our local law enforcement officers to say that they will find somebody who's a rapist, and because he is undocumented, that they will let him go. I know of people who are hard-working immigrants who committed no more than violation than driving with the lights out, that got caught up in this system and were put into deportation proceedings. That's the unfortunate side. But I know of no people who has committed a violent crime who has been let go by our local police officers. I feel that they're committed to keeping us safe, and I personally want to thank them for that. But if Measure 105 passes, and law enforcement, local law enforcement is empowered to detect and document the immigrants, the result will, can only be racial profiling. The only way you can avoid racial profiling is by asking, by having our officers ask 100% of the people that they run into for their papers. So I would ask you, councillors, staff members, how would you feel if every day somebody came up to you and asked you for your papers? Would you be opposed to Measure 105 then? I personally would not want that to happen. But because of my skin color, I know in some parts of this state, this wonderful state that has been my home for almost 30 years, I will get that. And there will be places where people like me will not be able to go, because local communities will feel that I'm a threat just because, or those of the community who you've heard before. So I, in a way, I feel that, you know, we, the supporters of Measure 105 should just be upfront and admit that repealing Measure 105 is just step one of moving to removing people like, like me and my family members. And so I just want to support and urge you to vote no on 105. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for, for Levy? Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Thank you very much for joining us. Before I read into our note for the record, we do have one more person who'd like to testify. Would you come down and hand your slip to Ms. Davis, please?
Good evening. And I apologize, I got here a little bit late. So...
Would you introduce yourself, your name, and your city of residence for the record? And then you have five minutes. The yellow light will mean that you have one minute left.
Thank you. My name is Leonardo Reyes. I am a resident of Kaiser, actually live down the road. I'm a graduate of McKee High School, attended Shemekah Community College, attended Western Oregon University, and I am undocumented. I am a DACA recipient. I actually work also right down the road. And while I understand that identifying myself as undocumented might make some people in this room very uncomfortable, I think it's important for me to put that out there, because we often have this conversation as the us-and-them conversation. There is no us-and-them, there's just us. You know, I'm part of this community. I live here. I've been here for many years. I love my home, and I think it's important to have this conversation very openly. And though I didn't prepare a written speech, I just would like to say a few things about what my concerns on Measure 105 are and what it would create. Really, my concern, even though I am concerned about racial profiling, which, to be quite honest, you know, I'm Latino, Hispanic, and I'm brown, I'm more concerned about victims and how Measure 105 can become a tool for people to abuse those who are vulnerable, for wage theft, for victims of domestic violence, for, you know, victims of different crimes, and how they might then be afraid to call the police when something happens, and the burden that might place on our Department of Police and our Chief of Police, John, John, I can't pronounce your last name, I'm sorry. And that's a real concern, is when you have very real fear in our community to access the very departments that are meant to protect and to serve us because of what might happen, not just to themselves, but to their families. This is an issue that affects everybody, not just the undocumented community. It affects those, the families who are living here, who are citizens. It affects their friends. It affects their relatives. It affects their coworkers and their communities. And to those that say that perhaps the city council is not the place to take a stand on something like this, what I would say is that, as public servants, which you all have chosen to be, it is your duty and it is your responsibility to take a strong stance on what you believe to be right. And in this case, I hope that what you find is that urging a no vote on Measure 105 is what is right for yourself as an individual and for this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Hang on. Come on down. If we're going to have a conversation, we're going to have a conversation. I can't look at that clock, it's still doing this business. All right. Thank you very much. So I'm not going to sort, I'll just go in the order received, if I can read it. Alex Buren?
Alexi.
Is that get it correct? All right. Come on down. On deck is Pat Fisher. So if you would just give your name and your city of residence, and you have five minutes, sir.
All right. Hello, my name is Alex Buren. I live in Salem, but I have family members here in Kaiser. But I do, you know, I do come to Kaiser every now and then, do some shopping, drive the streets here. There's a saying in my community that says, it's not written, but there's a saying, "Don't go to Kaiser driving like an older Honda 90s, because you're going to get pulled over." And I know that's true. Actually, that's why I didn't go to Kaiser for a while. But that's racial profiling everywhere. I've also been pulled over for no reason, to ask why the license plates didn't come out on the system. If I had just purchased it, my first car that I had for over eight years, if I had just purchased it, there was a problem with the license plates. So racial profiling exists already. If Measure 105 gets passed, it's going to be more intensified, and people of color will not, are not going to be able to protect themselves, because the law is going to be written in a way that allows them to be profiled. I've talked to elders before of what it was like when, before the sanctuary law was put, and they said that they would shut down the major highways and do like, almost like a DUI checkpoint to ask people if they have citizenship. I've also actually recently talked to an elder who, this really ruined his life, because right before the amnesty in the 80s, this happened to him. He was going home from work, and he was taken at one of these checkpoints. And a couple months later, he could have been eligible for amnesty. So there's a lot of people like that in my community, you know. It's really scary that we're even fighting this today, 105. I still wake up every day thinking that, how could something so racist be written down and be sold as democracy? I also want to acknowledge a question to someone, if they have ever been a victim of, they have ever been a victim from an illegal alien. I think statistics show that you're most likely to be a victim of someone who is a citizen and an illegal alien. Thank you.
Hang on. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Next up is Pat Fisher. And on deck is Sarah Gridrider. I hope I said that correctly.
Hello, my name is Pat Fisher, and I'm a resident of Kaiser for almost nine years. I'm glad I found out about this opportunity to testify tonight. I would support the measure as it has been presented to you, and I think that the materials that come with the resolution show that the certain exceptions for when a city should take a position on a state issue, it appears clear to me that those tests are met, that if passed, Measure 5 would put a burden on our, on our police staff and other city staff, and would definitely create, put a stress and a rift in our community, which has been putting so much effort into being a unified and inclusive place to live. And I guess I do find it curious how, that the measure has come to you as a statement of how people should individually vote on an issue, rather than a position that all of you, mayor, councilors, and staff, would take jointly as a position for our city on behalf of all of us here and everybody else in Kaiser, whether it would be the city, the city of Kaiser, going on record as opposing the Measure 105 for the very good reasons that have been stated here, both from the personal standpoint and the legal standpoint. And I guess what I see also in this is that, why, it seems too narrow to limit it to just this Measure 105. A different measure will come up in a different year, so it really seems to me that the resolution, if not this time, then soon, should be to confirm the city of Kaiser's support for the longstanding sanctuary status of the state of Oregon, that we support that status because of the, what good it does for our community, and not only to support that existing sanctuary status that protects us all, but to include, but to dovetail with that what our other speakers mentioned, which is to take the proactive stance of creating an inclusivity statement. And as you remember, Mayor Clark, that was an issue that I brought to you several months ago, my concern about that. So that's all of the remarks that I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Fisher? Thank you, thank you for joining in the conversation. Sarah Gridrider? Did I say that correctly?
Greider.
Greider. All right. If you would just give your name and your city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sarah Greider, and my city of residence is actually Newburgh, but I'm candidate for State Senate for District 13, which encompasses the areas of Hillsborough all the way down here to Kaiser, Newburgh east to King City, Bull Mountain. I'm here tonight as a potential elected leader, but also as somebody who has knocked hundreds, thousands of doors in our region. I'm a veteran. I have a degree in criminal justice. I've worked in law enforcement. I've worked with survivors of trauma, abuse, domestic violence, and I currently work in education at Newburgh High School. Throughout those experiences, what I've seen is that folks who are afraid to report to law enforcement won't do that. There are so many barriers already, and Measure 105 would only create more. So I have my professional experiences, but I also have the human standpoint that I see on the news every day where children are being held in tents, in chain-linked cages essentially, for a civil offense. They're not committing violent crimes. Their offense is a bureaucracy, red tape issue, and they're being locked in cages. My second point I want to make is that being out knocking on doors, talking to farmers, to business owners, to residents, to community members here in our district, I know that aside from the human standpoint, that there's also a huge catastrophic economic effect that Measure 105 would incur on our region. Already, we're seeing folks in agriculture not being able to meet the demands they have because folks aren't showing up for work. They're afraid to cross through different cities in our region that are more or less immigrant unfriendly areas. They know. They know where they can drive through, they know where they can't. Measure 105 would only create open season on people of color in our state. There's already areas that they know are unfriendly, but this would make it open season. That would be catastrophic to our agriculture, our farms. There would be so many people who wouldn't be able to function anymore. So if the human standpoint doesn't speak to you, know that west of I-5 especially, the Senate District 13 area which I represent, would also be catastrophically economically affected by this measure. Also, as many other folks have said, this isn't a measure based in fact. This is a measure based in allegations, what people's fears are. If you look at the facts, the facts are the immigrant communities are family-based communities. They're law-abiding citizens. They contribute to our country, a country that was theirs. Our country, until just decades ago, the boundary lines encompassed many of these families' lands. Our history is a short history as a country, and we can't ignore that. We have to be a policymaking body based on facts, not on rhetoric, not on allegations, not on racism. We have to move forward in best practices and what makes sense. And I urge you to vote no on Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Gridrider, right?
Greider.
Greider. I'm going to get that right. I apologize. Any questions for Ms. Greider? Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Last call.
Nope, right there.
So we have Bill Burgess, and this will be last call.
Hi, councilors. Hi, Madam Mayor. Good to be here in the city of Kaiser today. Bill Burgess, I live in the city to the south, Salem, and I've been in this position that you're in today as a former city councillor in the city of Salem. It is, from my point of view, imperative that you make a public statement and say no on 105. You know, the city of Kaiser is known for a lot of really great things. Number one is the volunteerism that this city has. You're a model for the rest of the county. Another one was your nice clean water that you were able to share with us. And a third one is your frugality. You've always been able to get more with a dollar than maybe most other communities have been able to do. And you know Rocky Berea, the person who passed this legislation or brought this legislation forward over 30 years ago, is an old friend of mine, and he didn't think of this as a sanctuary law. He thought of it as a law for government, local government, to save money. To save money. I know you like to hear that. And so that's why, that was a big reason for the law. The other reason was, of course, to try to stop racial profiling. And I believe if you, for just those two reasons alone, sponsor no on Measure 5, that would be great. There are also humanitarian reasons that I think we all understand. We have to fight against sometimes our baser nature and look for our better angels, as speakers before talked about. Abraham Lincoln talked to us about listening to our better angels, not our lesser angels. In my work as your county clerk right now, our passport agency really burst its seams. We used to do about 800 passports a year. We had a new president, a new president with a new way of doing things. Now, we're averaging 5,000 passports a year. What's that, six or eight times what we were doing before? And why? A lot of that is because families are concerned that if a parent gets deported, they want to be able to get their families back together. So we have so many people, Latinos coming in, to get passports for even little kids, even babies, because they want to be able to somehow find, because those kids, of course, are American citizens, and if a parent is deported, how are the kids even going to get back to the parent without having documentation? So people, many people of modest means are spending a lot of money to get passports for these kids right now. And to me, I think it's sort of a travesty. It's against to what we as a country really stand for. But knowing the city of Kaiser, knowing you as all very decent citizens, setting an example for the rest of us, because that, in government, is our job to set an example, take the higher ground, set an example for the rest of the community, I would certainly urge you to very vehemently vote no on Measure 105. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Mr. Burgess? Thank you for joining us tonight. And for the record, Bill Burgess is an elected official as our county clerk. We have received emails, and just want to make sure that these will be put into the record. We received an email from Gary J. Will, asking us to favor Measure 105 and to vote down... to vote down the resolution. And his email will be included in the record and will be posted online. We have one from Betty Hart, and she's asked that we support this measure of urging a no vote on Measure 105. And this will go into the written record. For the record, Betty Hart is a board member for the Kaiser Fire District. We have an email from Senator, State Senator Kim Thatcher, who has asked that we vote no on this resolution and support Measure 105. And we have an email string that began with an email from Brandon Smith, who is resident of Salem, and asking us not to take a position on the measure, on the resolution regarding 105. And asked a question that I've asked our city attorney to address in, when we take this up, asking the question for discussion, that if we take a position on any ballot measure or state measure, is it considered a donation to the campaign? So those will all be entered into the record. Okay. We have no public hearings. And before we take up this, I would like to go ahead and take care of a couple other pieces of business. So we will, unless the council wants to take this out of order, we will take care of items A and B. All right, let's go ahead and take care of item 8A, which is waive a community center rental fee for the Kaiser Community Band concert. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kaiser Community Band was formed in 1998 at the request of former city of Kaiser Mayor Bob Newton. Mayor Newton wanted a band that would represent the community and furnish music for community functions as well as music for entertainment. At the request of Mayor Newton, former Salem Public School Band Director Roy Shelton recruited community members to form a band and to achieve Mayor Newton's goal. Director Shelton conducted the band until his retirement in 2003. Michael Konig, a former student of Director Shelton, then took over conducting the band. The band is active in the area, playing for numerous fundraising events and occasions such as the Iris Festival. Thank you. Kaiser Community Band has requested space in the community center on Wednesday, November 14th, 2018, for a salute to veterans and America concert. Concert will be free to the public. Iris B will accommodate the concert. The rental rates for the Kaiser Community Center, Iris B, are listed below, and they include the 25% discount for Kaiser citizens or Kaiser-based 501(c)(3) organizations. Kaiser Community Band qualifies for that discount. So you have a number of options available to you listed below. I would read them, but my voice is dying. And we look forward to hearing what you have to say about this.
All right. Any questions on the staff report? All right. Yeah, do not share.
I have been up here so many times, when city councillors on both sides of me have been sick. It's your turn now.
I think that would be considered retaliatory. Yeah. Enjoy that. All right. Council President Parsons wants to put a motion on the table, then we can amend debate, have, figure it out. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council approve number four, which is waive the room rental fee, security cleaning deposit, but require insurance and charge $80 for event staff.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council approve option number four to waive the room rental fee, the security cleaning deposit, but require insurance and charge $80 for the event staff. Discussion. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that I have seen most of these concerts in the past few years, and they are really impressive. And not only do they play fantastic music, but there is also an educational, an educational element to it. They really do a lot of research into the songs and the music and the composers. And it is really a beneficial community event. Also, I guess I would like to question a little bit with the $80 fee. In terms of revenues, do they, I guess my question is, and I don't know if anybody has an answer for this or not, but where do they get their money? As far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, it's just a group of volunteers all getting together to play music. So, you know, requiring them to pay $80, I'm not sure where that would come from. And again, I don't know if there's an answer for that, but that's just my question that I'm throwing out there.
Do we have anybody here from the Kaiser Community Band? So we don't have anybody here to answer that question tonight. And I think it's a valid point. They do have to have insurance, you know, to be able to do events and so forth. So as 501(c)(3), there's a fundraising element to that. And I believe they do have a website, and they're very happy to accept donations. So if anybody feels so inclined, please go to their website. But, yeah.
I guess a follow-up question. I know they've been here in the Civic Center before. How much have they, what would have been the, what has been the terms before?
Oh, nothing?
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
I just want to state, I think, given all of the requests that we get, I think the option for Madam President's recommendation is more than fair. And if they wanted a free concert, they could go to the park. I mean, they're using our facilities. It's taxpayers' money to, you know, to pay for the event or the security and the insurance. So I think that's more than reasonable, and I support that.
Any further discussion?
Well, it is in November. I'll just throw that out there. For this particular concert, a park wouldn't really be an option. But, yeah. So Tracy, did you have comment on that?
I'm not sure my phone's working. They have came before the council before and asked for a waiver, and they were granted a full waiver. So they have
Just one time? Last, just last year or the year before?
Is that just one time?
There's been a couple of concerts, yeah. They've been here.
The first one's free?
So anyway, it's up to us if we want to go full or if we want to do the minimum, which is the insurance, which protects them as well as the city.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we waive the $80.
For staff?
I would second that.
Hang on. It's a friendly amendment, so that would have to go to the mover and the second to accept.
I accept.
Thank you.
It is not accepted by, anyway. I I know these are very well attended by the community, but I agree with Counselor Ryan that we need to cover event staff costs, which is $80. So I am not in favor. Okay. So it is not a friendly amendment. Do you want to make a motion to amend?
Sure. I will. I'd like to make a motion to amend.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. There's the motion to amend to waive the charge for staffing. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. I would just like to reiterate. We get a lot of great groups in here raising great money, cancer, all sorts of great information. And we have been consistent in keeping fairness of the citizens of the cost and not charging the citizens. And that's really where the bottom line is. So for that reason, I will oppose.
Counselor
Isn't this free to the community, though? It's free. It's not a ticketed event, right? They just, people just can come and listen to the music. Is that correct? Is that, thank you.
Counselor Herrera?
Yeah, it means that we've done it before. It's been free. And if you haven't ever been to one of these things, it's really cool. And it's free to the public. If they were charging, I would think differently. But I think that I'm in line with Counselor Reed. I agree with her, and I think it's a, it's a community event.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No? Oh, hands on the nose. So one, two, three. So motion passes 5-3. 4-3. Amendment passes. So the motion is now amended to be for the insurance only, insurance requirement only. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? To the main, the main motion.
The main motion.
It has been amended. The motion to amend passed. So now we're to the main motion, which is whether or not to grant the waiver of all but the requirement for insurance.
Okay, right.
Okay. So motion passes 6-2. 5-2. I saw
There's only seven of us.
I'm doing math in public.
She wasn't a math major, just so you know.
I was a science major. All right. Let's go on to 8B before I further embarrass myself for not being able to count to seven, and talk about a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant for Cummings School project, and a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a Safe Routes to School infrastructure grant for Kennedy School project. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawyer?
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor, councilors. Letter of intents for applications for Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant funding, that's a mouthful, were submitted to the Oregon Department of Transportation, or ODOT, as previously authorized by the city council for projects near Cummings Elementary School and Kennedy Elementary School. The letters of intent were reviewed by ODOT staff, and both projects were deemed eligible to apply for the Safe Routes to School infrastructure grant funding. The project near Cummings School consists of an asphalt pathway separated from vehicle travel lane on the west side of Delight Street from Schmauer Road to Dearborn Avenue. The Kennedy School project consists of an asphalt pathway separated from the vehicle travel lane on the south side of May Street from Verde Lane to Noran Avenue, and completion of approximately 100 feet of concrete sidewalk on the north side of Dearborn Avenue at Noran Avenue. The Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant funding criteria require a 20% local funding match. The engineer's estimate for the Cummings School project is $210,000, which equals a city contribution of $42,000. The engineer's estimate for the Kennedy School project is $222,000, which requires a city contribution of $44,000. Funding is available in the city council adopted fiscal year 1819 street fund capital outlay budget. Staff recommends the city council adopt the attached resolutions authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for the Safe Routes to School infrastructure grant program for the Cummings School project and the Kennedy School project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right. These are great projects. I am super excited about this. All right. Counsel President Parsons?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first resolution is I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018 authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant for Cummings School project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018 authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant for Cummings School project. Discussion. I think I already, you know, said it right up front. I think this is a great project. So there's my discussion part. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018 authorizing the Public Works Director to apply for a Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant for Kennedy School project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt R. 2018, Resolution 2018, authorizing the Kaiser Public Works Director to apply for a Safe Routes to Schools infrastructure grant for Kennedy School project. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 8C. A resolution urging a no vote on Measure 105. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City attorney?
Thank you, Chris. Madam Mayor and council. This issue, as we can see, was on the agenda. We had a lot of opportunity for public comment tonight. I wanted to start out by making sure you folks understand that the city manager and I do not and cannot weigh in on any political or policy issues. So any comments that I make are purely on process, and should be only taken that way. I wanted to address first, before I got into a couple other issues, the question that the mayor raised regarding Brandon Smith's email, and a question about reporting this. And for those of you who didn't get a chance to see it, Mr. Smith basically was implying that a passage of the resolution as proposed urging a no vote would somehow be an advertisement under election law. I did not see that email. It's about noon today. I'm not an expert on campaign finance law. I did look at the Secretary of State's manual on that. I did not have an opportunity to do deeper research in that into the actual statutes. However, what it says is that you spend, you'd have to spend $750 or more in a communication that is essentially an advertisement. I would find it unlikely that that would be an issue. I mean, council, city councils have, not this council particularly, but other councils have weighed in on ballot measures pro-con in the past. I've never heard that raised. So I'm not, I'm not sure that's an issue of concern. Could be wrong on that. So that, but that's kind of where I stand on that. With regard to my staff report, for the benefit of the audience who didn't get that, I'm going to summarize it. I don't want to go over the whole thing. But essentially, this is an issue that staff did not bring to council. Councilors, Council President Parsons, Council Herrera, and Mayor Clark requested to be put on the agenda, is my understanding from my communications with the mayor, which is the three members of the council that's required to put an agenda item before that. So it's a council agenda item. Measure 105, as we've heard talk, repeals ORS 181a 820. That statute prohibits using law enforcement resources to detect and apprehend persons whose only violation of the law is that they are persons of foreign citizenships present in the United States in violation of federal immigration law. Law enforcement can still arrest or apprehend persons charged with criminal violation of immigration law or other federal crimes if there's warrants for that. Essentially, the issue is twofold. And what I would suggest is bring up, and I put a copy on your, on the dius there, of a resolution that was raised earlier by former councillor Walsh, I believe, and former mayor Coho. Resolution R. 2003-1391, adopting council policy of non-involvement in state and federal policy issues. My suggestion to you folks in terms of analysis this evening on this issue would be to take that as a threshold question before you get into the substance of the Measure 105 issue on urging no or not urging no, or whatever, however you decide to deal with that as a policy matter. It would be, it's difficult to do that without getting into some of the substance of it, I would suppose. But for the audience and for the council, I'm not going to read the whole resolution about the wherestes. But the meat of it is, and this is directly verbatim from the resolution, "Be it resolved by the city council, the city of Kaiser, the city council shall not take a position on issues of state or federal policy unless such policies affect the city of Kaiser residents or city operations, including but not limited to operations and duties in the areas of land use planning, utility service, law enforcement, local policy, and budgetary roles." It goes on to say, "Be it further resolved, the city council shall be the sole decision-maker on whether a particular state or federal policy issue shall have an effect on Kaiser, Kaiser residents, or Kaiser's role as local government authority." My suggestion, Madam Mayor and council, and you can choose to deal with the issue however you choose, is to deal first with this as a formal decision by you, by motion if you choose, or consensus or otherwise, on whether or not this resolution is an issue here. In other words, is this an issue under the current resolution where this measure would affect the city of Kaiser residents or city operations, including but not limited to operations and duties in the areas of land use planning, utility service, law enforcement, local policy, and budgetary roles? And that's how it affects the city of Kaiser residents or city operations, is the exact verbiage. And again, it's this resolution, if you want to refer to it on the dius there, it's the bottom paragraph of page one. In any event, my suggestion is to deal with it in that manner first, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you. Just as a note.
Just as a note, the letter introduced by Brandon Smith, I think it should be included that he is and was a Kaiser, even though he's a Salem resident, he was a Kaiser City councillor for quite a while. And I respect his opinion, and I think he needs, that wasn't read, so I want to make sure people realize that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So, the first question before us is, as we enter in this conversation, is the viewpoint of whether this issue rises to the level of being an issue of state or federal policy that affects the citizens or operations for the City of Kaiser. So, when I joined the group that put this onto our agenda, that was the point of view that I came from. So, that is my, that's my framework, is that this does, and which is why I favored putting this on the agenda. So, this is open for discussion if we want it by either consensus or by motion to make that determination before we move into the meat of the resolution itself. Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that it's been pretty clear through the public testimony tonight. I think that's one of the important questions, is affecting the City of Kaiser residents, we need to hear from the residents. And I think that we've heard very clearly tonight that this does affect them. And I think it's also pretty clear that it also is a law enforcement issue, as it mandates whether or not law enforcement should be in the business of apprehending people whose only crime is to be undocumented. So, I think that it is very consistent with what we've passed as a precedent.
Okay. Council Ferrera?
I agree with Council Reed. I think that the provision that states how it affects our community by the original, is definitely affecting our community. And I think that's, that's the biggest thing to me, in my view, because I don't question our public, our police department, because they focus on public safety. I get that, and they're not going to be, I don't envision them changing a whole bunch, and I could be wrong, but I, but what I do see is that how it affects our community, those of us that have built, worked hard to build these bridges, and I look at it from the community of Latinos in Kaiser, that it would be a setback. And I think it fits perfectly into how we're presenting this, because it directly affects, it says here, our community members, and provisions of service of dignity and respect. And that, that is what we're talking about here. So, I believe it's, we're right on where we should be. And I do appreciate hearing from all the folks out there, because I learned, I even learned some things myself. I have my own thoughts, but, you know, to get this kind of response from our community is great. I'd like to see you guys in more meetings, but this is, this is very, very applicable in my, in my view. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I, there was a couple of times I mentioned, but I want to say to all of you, please, don't be strangers. This is our community, and we want to do business together. So, Council Freeman?
So, Chief, this question's for you. I know that it's been implied you're not going to change. The police department won't change anything. Would you like to make a statement to that? Can you make a statement to that?
I can make a statement to that, yes. In fact, it won't change what we do. As a matter of policy and practice, we police a certain way. We do not enforce federal law. We work with ICE at the moment, within the parameters described by statute, and that won't change.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one more follow-up.
Yes.
And I will just reiterate something that Pat Fisher stated, is that this is, this is this measure, but there could be additional measures that come before us, and I think this really is the start of a bigger conversation. And Cindy, right, was here before, talking about inclusion and other things, and I just think that this is a bigger conversation, and we had a lot of people here tonight having that conversation, but I think it goes beyond this measure. So, I, I just think this is the start of a conversation that needs to continue to happen, whether this measure was, is on the ballot or not, and this is something that council has talked about, but we've never had this many people in the audience as we have tonight. And to the Latino community that are here, I hope that you will come back and continue to share your comments, but then help us reach out to other groups in our community that are not represented here tonight. So, it's not, it's, this infects a lot of people, so thank you.
Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on the question a little bit, if Measure 5 were to pass, would that change the way you do business? Because you said that we don't enforce federal law currently, so would that change if Measure 5 were to pass?
Yeah, Measure 105. That, yeah, that's the way I responded. I responded, as if it passed, it would not change the way we at Kaiser do business. I'll add that the Attorney General asked me, of all the chiefs in the state, to serve on her racial profiling task force under House Bill 2355, as one chief and one sheriff. Coincidentally, I have to miss a meeting with my boss tomorrow morning to attend a follow-up meeting with that, to put the final touches on that as it rolls out across the state. I say that just to say I'm very aware of these issues and the way that they're enforced or not enforced in the state. Subsequently, we at Kaiser, we police a particular way, which many people in the audience are familiar with and appreciate. We have a great relationship. We try to cultivate those relationships and maintain them, and whether this passes or not is not going to change.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say quick? Okay. This is not entirely relevant, but one of the things I learned from a ride-along, and this was brought up by Mr. Reyes's comments, the officer that I was riding with, yes, they do profile late-model Hondas, but not the people who are driving them, just because that is the model that are most stolen. So, anyway, just wanted to, again, kind of have the backs of our police force a little bit. It's not the drivers that they're profiling as much as it is the cars. So, that's one thing I learned as my ride-along, so just throwing that in there.
So, the question before us is whether or not we want to, either by consensus or by, or by motion, determine that this is a, an issue to take up. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, first of all, I need, I want everybody to understand that we're a nonpartisan body. That means we don't represent one side or the other, and I do believe it is not in our scope of responsibilities for the reasons that Shannon had mentioned. I also believe that we don't have any business stating our opinion as a body or as a council to tell people how to vote, that this is on a ballot measure for a reason, and that when we assert ourselves personally, professionally, or as a body, that it's with, it's not, that we represent all residents. I understand we represent the residents that are here, but we also represent almost 40,000 residents. And I think that we need to entrust our, our citizens and our residents to vote on what their opinions and values are, and that it is not our job to sway or lead them as a body. And I do think that this is going to be very divisive. I don't, I don't support moving forward with it, because I think it's divisive, and it's dividing our community, and I disagree. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Council Ferrera?
Yes. To follow up on Council Ryan's, I don't, I think it would be more divisive if we do not pass this resolution. And let me tell you why. Because you're going to start seeing, and I, I believe in our police department, but I know our, our community, and I know that, and by the way, we're not telling people how to vote. People still vote the way they want to do. But as elected leaders, if we will, I feel like we have a responsibility to protect all of our citizens, just like you said. And when I'm talking about all of our citizens, I'm talking about the ones you don't see except you go shopping and you see us. But somebody told me that today. I kind of respect that. But I tell you what, this is something very relevant today, and we need to take a stand and be a leader, and show, you know, people still can vote the way they want. And if, you know, so, I just think as elected official, it's time for us to take a stand on something that affects our community, members of our community. And like I say, we've gained so much ground in the last few years, thanks to our police department, our mayor, and all of us here, and I don't want to take a step back. I just don't. And I think that, I don't, I think it's, you know, in general, you're right, we shouldn't be meddling in, you know, but this affects our citizens. And those of you that don't see it and don't live around it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I see it myself. I think I might be the only councillor that's been profiled. I've been profiled in this town, and not the last 10 years, by the way, or 20 years. But, I mean, it's not, it's not a fun thing. All my grandkids live here, in this, this community, in Kaiser, and I don't want them to be questioned like I was. And I kind of take the high road on that, because I've learned to do that. But it shouldn't, nobody should be told and asked, "How long you been in this country?" What, you know, come on. And that's how I look at it, and that's from my perspective. My, my lens is way different than yours, and I respect, and by the way, I do respect those that disagree with me. That's the beauty, that we can disagree. But as a leader in our community, I think that it's time to make a decision, and I think that we are on the right track. I've heard plenty of eloquent speeches tonight, and they, they touch me. I mean, a lot of them, I can see what, where we're affected, they're affecting these folks out here. So, I just want you to know that there's total respect in your opinion, but that's how my lens sees it, because I've been directly affected by it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Shall we put a, shall we do this by motion then, whether or not to take this up?
Or consensus.
Consensus.
We can do consensus.
Consensus on taking it up.
All right. Because we're starting to debate content.
Yeah.
So, and although I, I heard from Council Ryan that, if I heard your comments correctly, that this is not a matter we should take up. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, but, so that is not consensus. We do need to do a motion.
Oh, okay.
Council President Parsons, could you craft one?
Okay. I will do this.
I'm sure our City Attorney would help you with the language if you need it.
So, we're not adopting a resolution, but what we are is just...
So, Madam Mayor and Council President Parsons, I think the, the motion, depending on which direction you're going to go on the motion, Council President Parsons, would basically refer to Resolution 2003-1391. And the motion would be either that this issue does not fall within it, or it does fall within the constraints of that resolution. So, I, I don't want to presume which motion you're going to make.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. See, I make a motion that Resolution R. 2003-1391 does fall within the constraints of the resolution that we're going to discuss, 105.
Or the other way around?
The other way around, that the...
Way around.
Right. That the, the proposed, the proposed resolution on Measure 105 does not fall...
Resolution falls within the constraints of Resolution R. 2013-1391, sorry.
Does not, that is...
Does not.
Does or does not?
No.
Does.
Does.
She said does.
Is prohibited by would be the best, is, is, that is...
I'm so confused.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm saying that does. I think we should take it up. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, you do think it should take it up?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood which direction you were going.
That's...
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council take up the, the issue of the resolution on Measure 105, because it does fall within the constraints of Resolution R. 2003-1391. Discussion.
That's just what I said.
Yes, you did. Well, I had heard it two or three times so I could get it right. Thank you for making me look good.
No worries.
That was the second. Council Ferrera?
Thanks, Fisher.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? All of, Council Freeman?
Sorry, I was a little late with my hand. I'm not sure who to ask this, if it's Shannon or Chris. Can you, we talked about the Kaiser residents. Did we talk about city operations, or is that a different? So, can we say...
Law enforcement in the...
Okay. So, go ahead and finish your, finish your thought. Well, maybe, kind of is all in one, so, never mind. I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Okay. So, we have, motion passes, five-two. The noes are Freeman and Ryan. So, we will now take up the, the issue. Let's put a motion on the table, and then we can debate. Council President Parsons, are you willing to make the motion?
Yes, for, for, so we can have a good discussion up here. I, I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018 urging, urging a no vote on Measure 105.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2018 urging a no vote on Measure 105. Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Council, Council Anderson?
Just, I wanted to hold off making this point, but just to, for the record, this motion, or, I'm sorry, the resolution does state that it urges, if it passes, would urge all citizens to vote no on the measure. So, it does, it is urging a no vote. So, it's not, it is doing that. It's not just making a general statement about, about the, about the measure.
I was urged not to drink beer.
So, this, so to your point that this is actually, this does include not only just a statement, but also a...
Urges a no vote, yeah. It urges a no vote on the measure, which just, I wanted to correct the record on that, yeah. I mean, it was stated earlier that it does not, it did not do that, and it does.
That is correct. Council Ferrera?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. It does urge, but, you know, do you vote the way you want to vote? All we're saying is, if we are saying that this is what we believe as a, as an entity, you're going to vote the way you want, but this is what we believe. We urge you to vote no. You don't want to vote no? Don't. This is just what we're urging as a body. Thank you.
Council President Parsons?
Okay, I'm, I want to say I've lost a lot of sleep on this. I've been on the bubble a lot, because I wasn't sure, is that as a city entity, as Council Ryan stated, we should be taking this up. However, seeing all of you in the room tonight, and realizing that this will affect our citizens has completely, like, made me, I'm going to gain sleep now. So, I want to say, I want to say that, you know, I, I did a lot of studying. I mean, I looked everything up. I was on the bubble. I went back and forth, but I have to say that this, the resolution that they passed a million years ago not to take up unless it would affect the citizens, I think this will affect, I think this will affect all citizens, and especially the undocumented ones. And I, we are not the federal government. We are the City of Kaiser. We need to protect our residents in the City of Kaiser, and I don't think we should do, like someone stated earlier, we're not going to do the federal government's job. We're going to do our job, which is public safety, you know, and protecting our citizens. So, thank you for coming tonight, because you helped me figure this out.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Council Freeman?
So, I too have done Saturday afternoon, a lot of research. I am going to support Council Ryan. I don't believe it's my place to tell people how to vote. Thank you for the people who left lots of messages on my cellphone, stating your thoughts as well. I appreciate everyone coming and giving testimony, but I still believe this is a bigger conversation, and I think it's more of a community conversation with the 40,000 people that live here. Not that I discount anyone that's in this room tonight, but these are the discussions that are happening across the state. There's lots of racial equity task forces established by the governor. There's one on homeownership happening as well. There are lots of things happening in this state, and we, as a collective group, have to have more conversations. How I vote personally is my personal choice, just as Catherine said earlier, it is her personal choice. It's everyone in this room's personal choice how they vote. I don't believe it's up to me to tell the City of Kaiser how to vote on a measure at all. I respect everyone, but it is a bigger conversation that needs to happen, along with the youth that are in this room, and I will say that because you had lots of courage to come and speak in front of us tonight, and all the other citizens. It's just a bigger conversation than this resolution.
Thank you very much. Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do agree that it is definitely for a bigger conversation, but I believe that this resolution is the beginning to that conversation. I believe that if we can't stand up and protect our citizens within our jurisdiction, then that conversation can't happen as effectively as it, as it should. So, I agree. This is an ongoing conversation. We need to be able to continue to, to talk to each other, agree agreements or not. We need to talk to people who disagree with us, and I think that this, this measure ensures that both sides will have a voice in that conversation. So, that is why I am supporting it. Also, I know that there's a, a lot of fear going around about crimes perpetrated by, by undocumented people, and I just wanted to point out that there is specific language in this resolution that prohibits using law enforcement resources to detect and apprehend persons whose only violation of the law is that they are persons of foreign citizenship present in the United States, and violation of federal immigration laws. So, yes, our, our police force will continue to do its job in, in apprehending those people who, who are violating the law in other ways. And as was brought up in, in testimony, this, in many ways, our undocumented people are held to a much higher standard because of the traffic infractions, the parking tickets and so forth that can get them in trouble. So, so I just wanted to point out that that is part of this resolution, that, that we are only protecting those people whose only violation of the law is that they are here undocumented. So, and that, that in also supporting the, the fact that, yes, people will vote what they, what their conscience will dictate, and that is, that is what America's all about. That's what democracy is all about. But I think that it is important that we, as a city, take a stand on that. Not telling people how to vote, but representing the values of what we think is right, based on the people who voted us in. And if you don't agree with us, you're certainly welcome to vote us out. That is the democratic way. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, and I'm referring to my notes, so I apologize. I'm not making eye contact, but obviously, this is an important issue, and it's a conversation, and the conversation goes both ways. And I know that you're here and representing your voice, and I appreciate that, but this is not a, a balanced conversation, I think you'd all agree. And I think we represent the entire city, everyone's voice, and I think that's one of the things that humble us, to help us remember that it is not our place to tell anyone. And we are, as elected officials, we're in influence in the community. Our, we're judged constantly on, on what we do and what we say, and so people look at us as, as, with respect, as to what, what we're, what we're sharing as a message, which is why I think this, this weighs heavily. It does need a bigger conversation, which is multiple sides, and I, I love the diversity of the conversation, but I want to remind people that Measure 105 is on the ballot because 109,000 Oregonians voiced their opinions and put it on the ballot. It's there for a reason. It's not our job to say it should be there or shouldn't be there. We, we were elected by the people to represent their voice. I don't believe that all citizens have had a chance to educate themselves on this ballot measure, which actually, whether to support it or disapprove it, which is really evident from some of the testimony here tonight of some of the incorrect information that's, that's out there, because not everybody has, if you read the ballot, not everybody has the right information. I think that, and that's up to us to do our research and due diligence, right? And I don't mean us as a body, but us as a community. And so, for that reason, I think that it's really important to remember that, that there is a bigger picture, that we, we aren't discussing, it's not our job to discuss immigration or our opinion. It's up to the state to find a way to help the people that are hardworking and good citizens to be, to be legal or to be protected, and I, and I totally agree with that. But I just think it's such a bigger community conversation, and, and that it's not our right to tell people or mislead them in, in how we want to vote as a person or as a body. I just think that that's not our role. That being said, this November 6th, the people will speak, and I will support the, the decision of the people's decision November 6th. So, I think it's important to remember that.
Thank you very much. Council Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. Really want to add my, to, or ditto to what folks have said earlier about folks, y'all coming in tonight and testifying. I think that's really important, and it's great to see everybody out here tonight. I definitely would like to see folks here for every one of our city council meetings. So, like the mayor said, come on back. We can definitely use your voice on other timely topics. So, I appreciate that. Two items that I'm, I'm just gonna point out here. Number one, I appreciate Chief Teague making the statement that he did. I think it underscores the way that he runs our, our police department, which I greatly appreciate, kind of doing the right thing, doing, standing up for, for what he should be for the residents of this community. So, I do appreciate that. I will disagree with some of those who have said that folks can vote, or, well, the measure says urges all citizens to vote no on this measure. And I'm sorry, but that is telling people that, how to vote on something, and it, you know, I am absolutely, I will be voting no on 105 personally. I, I do not agree with the measure, or any of the underpinnings of it whatsoever. It actually offends me, but I will be absolutely voting no on it. The problem I've got with this resolution is how it's worded. If, it's not a measure, this is not a resolution opposing the measure, it's urging folks to vote no on the measure. It may be semantic to some people, but I, I think it's important, it's an important distinction, and unless we can change that measure around, or change the wording on that around, I will have to be a no vote on the measure.
So, do you have language that you would like to recommend, or to put out there for discussion?
I would...
I know I'm putting you on the spot, but you've given this a lot of spot.
You are putting me on the spot. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
You've given this thought, obviously.
Golly gracious. Well, you know...
Oh, I've never done that before, have I?
Never.
Oh, no.
Ah...
There, there is, is there a, a space where you feel this would accomplish the goal with a...
Well, I'll just say, you know, just the other thing to add is, you're getting to the loppiest in me, and how to wordsmith things, so doggone it. Yeah, I, I mean, the appropriate thing to, frankly, that should be before us would be that the Kaiser City Council opposes Measure 105, not urges a no vote.
So...
That's a declaratory, that's a declaratory statement by this body about the measure versus urging people to vote no on it. I know it may, it may seem to be one and the same, but I don't think it is. I think it's, it's a, it's a difference, and I think it's an important one.
Is that, are you wanting to make that a friendly amendment?
Can I make that a friendly amendment, too?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
You can be as friendly as you like. We are among friends here.
No, I appreciate that very much. We may, some of us may disagree with one another, but...
But we don't have to disagree.
Yeah, we can do so without being disagreeable, which is what I appreciate very much. Yeah, sure, I would make the friendly amendment for the city council to express its opposition to Measure 105.
So, if that would be, um, okay, I'm looking.
It would be at the, on Measure, uh, line seven.
It'll be therefore resolved.
Page two of the resolution.
Line seven.
Line seven, after the word council, insert the language opposes Measure 105, and delete the rest of that sentence.
So, the friendly amendment is to change the language from the Kaiser City Council urges all citizens to vote no, to the Kaiser City Council...
Opposes Measure 105.
Opposes Measure 105.
Yes.
Period.
Yep.
Mr. Johnson.
You'd want to change the title accordingly.
And the title. To, instead of...
Oh. To opposes.
Sorry, I missed that. That I missed. Yeah.
You just simply say opposes.
Yeah, it would say, uh...
Opposing, whichever.
Instead of saying no.
Opposing Measure 105. Instead of urging a no vote on opposing Measure 105. Yes.
What did the first and second think of this?
All right, so now that we've clarified...
I will accept.
The second is Council Herrera.
Second, I will accept also. I, I do want to say something that...
Okay, but just, before you do...
I will, I agree.
We have to vote first.
No, we're not gonna vote first, but I'm, no, we're gonna go ahead and discuss. So, the, the, the resolution has been amended to read that it is, City Council opposes Measure 105, and in line seven on page two, that the Kaiser City Council opposes Measure 105.
The title.
Is the title and, and line seven. Those are the two changes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that? Any questions on that step?
No, we don't.
Okay. Council Herrera, go. You're up. You raised your hand.
I didn't, sorry, you were supposed to say something.
If you don't, but I can go on to another question.
I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna pass on this one.
You're gonna pass.
We've already kind of hashed it out.
All right. Any further discussion with the amended language? So, then I'm gonna take my appointed privilege. You guys are awesome. We have been able to have a civilized conversation about a deeply divisive and uncomfortable conversation topic. We have shown once again that Kaiser knows how to have a conversation, and to be able to discuss issues in a way that we might disagree on without being disagreeable. I am so blessed to live in a community where we can have this kind of conversation, and honor and respect one another in doing so. I've also gotten phone calls from people, from both pro and con on this issue, and every single one of them has been so respectful. They've stated their opinion, and they have stated how they feel, and what they would like me to do as a, as a part of this council. Wow. I, I am truly in awe, and I'm very, very blessed. I think it's already very clear how I feel about this, because I was one of the three that asked to get this put onto the ballot, onto the agenda, sorry, onto the agenda tonight. Over, you know, over many months, many years, we have seen how we've needed to engage in this conversation, and I absolutely agree with Council Freeman, that this is a larger conversation. And this, I think, has opened the doors now to have that larger conversation. And I, but I agree with Council Reed, that this is that first step in affirming that we need to have that larger conversation. But to be clear, that we value and respect every single human being who is a part of our community of Kaiser, and that every person will be treated with dignity and respect, that we expect a law-abiding community that is respectful of each other's, you know, person and property, and that our law enforcement officers will indeed carry out their duty and work with us to remind those who may have other motivations that that is not how we fly here. But at the end of the day, what we want is a community that says, we, we recognize our individual responsibilities to be part of a larger community that takes care of one another. That's pride, spirit, and volunteerism, and that's what we do every day. So, yes, I do support this motion. I do support this resolution, but mostly, I support all of you present, people who are watching, the people who called me and expressed their opinions, and I, I'm very, very excited to move forward with our conversation about how we continue to build community in this wonderful city. Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes, 6-1. No, you're not. You are not. We're almost done, so we're not taking a break.
It's 1:00.
It's 1:00. No, it's 105. Council President Parsons, would you please read the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we have two items on the consent calendar tonight. Item 9A, approval of the September 4th, 2018 regular session minutes, and 9B is approval of September 10th, 2018 work session minutes.
Are there any polls? But Council President Parsons...
I move approval of the consent calendar.
The consent calendar, oh, I'm sorry. Second. Am I in a hurry, or what?
No.
The consent calendar now has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Council Liaison reports. Who shall I pick on first? How about Council Anderson? Shall I grab you?
He's not ready.
He's not ready.
You're picking on me tonight.
I am picking on you.
Good grief, man, oh, man.
So, there we go.
Well, um...
You.
Well, yeah, I wasn't quite ready, but I will nonetheless, I shall be ready. Yes, ma'am. I was, had to miss the last city council meeting on September 7th due to a work-related conflict. Mr. Matt Lawyer already mentioned the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. We, and we do have another meeting coming up this Wednesday, I believe. It's not popping up on my, or is it the following? Is this, okay, I don't know why it's not on my calendar here, but stranger things have happened.
It's the Google gremlins.
No, it's my, it's my phone. It's, that's the, yeah, something like that. Anyway, it's the Russians. That's what it is.
Oh, lordy.
I don't know what that means. No, I, I, I've nothing to re, yeah, no, that's all. Thank you.
I will circle back, sir. All right. Council Herrera.
I didn't do anything.
That's like a...
Actually, actually, I had a very busy week, this week. We were at the, the League of Oregon Cities. By the way, that conference was, there's always something good, and I, I really enjoyed it. I, I do appreciate the mayor's involvement. She's really everywhere, pretty much, but, and I learned a few things, and it's good to see old friends and learn new tricks. When I say tricks, it's kind of positive, because my friends from Hermiston and other areas in Oregon, we exchange ideas, and I feel like we're very fortunate here in Kaiser, hearing about other councils. So, McNary had a tough, tough at it, and, but they're still improving. But I think that's all I have.
All right. Yes, indeed. Council President Parsons.
And the only thing I had the last couple of weeks was I went to Liberty House Luncheon, which is always a big, a big event, celebrating children in the community, you know, and raising money. Going forward, however, I'm gonna be covering the Volunteer Coordinating Committee this Thursday for Council Freeman. The next Thursday's the Marion County Breakfast at Sherry's, and then the Traffic Safety Bike Race is on the 11th also, so.
Who's, who's up for Commissioner's Breakfast?
Uh, me. Me.
Yeah, you.
And Roland, and you?
I'm not.
No?
Okay, who's the third?
I think it's Roland.
Roland?
Yeah.
Okay, 1, 2, 3, all right.
I'll be there.
Okay, just want to make sure. All right.
It's, it's there somewhere. That's all I have.
It's in the, Tracy always lets us know.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the suite.
It's in the email. It's there.
Okay, all right. I just want to double check.
Oh, Ms. Clark, Herrera, and me.
All right. We're good. Just if anybody needs a sub, let somebody else know. All right. Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, what Council Herrera didn't say was that was homecoming. That, that, yeah, that last football game was homecoming, and it was, it was sad, but, you know, our guys have a really hard schedule, and they're playing really well, and so, yay for them. And also, it doesn't get as much chat about it, but the soccer team is number four in the state now.
Whoa.
The boys' soccer team, so we are really proud of them and the success that they're having. So, so, yeah, and, and our other teams are doing well as, as well, but those, you know, those are our, our big successes. So, and then also, this last weekend, I went with 50 McNary kids down to Ashland to, as part of the Oregon Shakespeare Festival Association. So, yes, and it was, it was really impressive. Those kids represented McNary so well, and represented Kaiser so well, and we are just really proud of them. And I, I've been on several of those trips now, and they always go off without, well, I won't say without a hitch, but with virtually no hitch. So, that is something to be really proud of our kids about. We have a Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Associating, Association meeting this Thursday at 6:30 here at the Civic Center, and we really encourage all citizens in that neighborhood to come. So, the more voices we hear, the better. And... So, the more voices we hear, the better. And the, nobody's mentioned this yet, so I, I'm going to grab it, but, uh, on Monday next, on the eighth, we have the Fire and Public Works Open House. So, I went to, for the first time last year, and it was really fun. You know, the, the fire, I'm going to say the fire toys are all out for, for people to look at, and they, they've got some great apparatuses, toys, yes, we'll go with that. And then Public Works, you know, is fascinating. There's so much around the town that we don't even think about how things work, like stormwater drainage or whatever. I learned so much last year by going to that. So, it's really a fascinating, um, fascinating event and great fun. I'm going to be bringing my grandsons, and they will love it, uh, but every, it's, it's great for everybody, so encourage you to come out Monday at six for that event. Oh, is it 6:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. I had it wrong in my calendar.
We can get there early. That's okay.
No, I'll change it. Thank you. Okay, and, yeah. Oh, also, there's a Kaiser, um, Community Conversation next Thursday, the 11th, here at the Civic Center at 6 o'clock as well, so that's...
That's right.
What I have to say about that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you much. Counselor Freeman?
I attended the Gubser Neighborhood Association Meeting. Uh, over an hour, all my West Kaiser people are gone because we meet for an hour and a half at West Kaiser, so I was loving the hour. Um, I know, sorry, it was great. Um, I attended, uh, the Community Conversation Session last week on recycling. Uh, they, it was a great presentation. It was, I think September was Recycling Month because we had the same presentation at West Kaiser, but, um, a lot more people, and there's about twenty-five people in attendance, uh, which was really nice, and, um, County Commissioner Kevin Cameron was there and spoke as a master recycler, so I think that was helpful, and hopefully, maybe other people will become a master recycler. Just a reminder, I am gone on October 15th. I will not be, um, at that meeting, as I will be in Austin, Texas for work. Uh, Counsel Reed already talked about the Public Works. Uh, on October 10th is the Planning Commission at 6:00 PM here. On October 11th is the, uh, Community Conversation hosted by the Kaiser Chamber of Commerce. I'm channeling you, Shannon, through Jonathan, and Marlene and I will be helping Bill Post with that event. Uh, so, for all of...
October 11th, yes.
Yes, I know. She looked at me. She'll, she would figure it out later. And, uh, for all of you that are still here, that is, um, Candidate Forum, so I would encourage everyone that was here tonight to come back on October 11th for the Candidate Forum, for those running for, uh, the open positions within, uh, the city and the mayor. And then also, that same night is the West Kaiser Neighborhood, uh, meeting at seven. The 11th is a busy night here. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, apparently, I should have been at the recycle meeting because I paid my bill and I got a huge amount of fines. I was really disappointed. I was so proud of myself. I didn't put my pizza boxes in anymore, and apparently, I've got it all wrong. So, I knew I missed that because I was at LOC, and I knew I missed that meeting. I'm going to have to catch up with a master recycler like Kevin, and, because I'm a failed recycler, apparently. I was so proud of myself, but, uh, so a couple of things. Um, I've had a busy couple of weeks. I attended the swearing-in for CASA. I think it's really important to know that, uh, that's our Kaiser, uh, our Kaiser program. It's not Kaiser Program, it's Marion County, but they're housed here in Kaiser, and our CASA is our court-appointed, uh, special advocates for our kids, and that was wonderful. We swore in fif, Judge Pellegrini swore in fifteen new CASAs, and we need more, so excited about that. Um, uh, I also, I was excited that we had, actually had our Kaiser Arts Association meeting, and we had a quorum, which was, that's a big deal. We've had a busy summer, and we've had a hard time getting people there, but it was a wonderful meeting, and we're planning our Christmas card, um, contest, for those that want to get the word out for the kids and the schools, that we are accepting, um, Christmas card submissions that will go out, um, we'll choose it as art committee, and then that goes out to all of our, um, people that we send them to as a council, and they're available to the city. And so, that was exciting. We also talked about our update on the story polls out front. We're going to do one at a time versus both of them, uh, for financial purposes. Am I saying that right, Nate? Okay, great. And that I want to be right and not give misinformation. I also attended the SCUF Luncheon, which is always exciting to support the kids and all the stuff that they're doing. Um, I was very honored to attend the LOC with, um, Mayor Kathy Clark and Roland Herrera, and it was, I, we accepted the safety ward, and that was mentioned, but I don't, I want to reiterate that we do that on behalf of all the citizens, or on behalf of the citizens, however, for the city, um, and the safety that the, the staff has, um, achieved, and so that was an honor to receive that. And I personally attended, um, I won't list them all, but I attended the Pers Reform Legislative Priorities, homeless. Kathy did an amazing job speaking about her homeless and representing our community. She spoke, um, multiple times and, and used Kaiser as a role model example of all of the great things happening with our homeless and, uh, moving forward with the, uh, possibilities and, and as an example to other communities, so congratulations on that, Kathy. Um, we also talked about, um, I attended Managing Disasters. I have too much information to be enough to be dangerous now, and, um, we've also overcoming the status quo. The 2020 census was just coming up. If anybody wants information on that, I'm happy to share. And then, um, the, um, I also talked about, or attended Community Engagement, which I think this was an exact, excellent example tonight of having citizens come and share their voice. And then I just wanted to reiterate, uh, or not reiterate, I did send a message. I won't be here October 29th or at the following City Council meeting after that, so, thank you very much.
All right. Uh, just a few things, um, to add to all the stuff going on. Um, the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee did meet on the 20th, and we are looking forward to hearing from, uh, the program coordinator along with the interim director of the, uh, Community Action Agency, Jimmy Jones, and Trisha, Trish Ratcliffe, um, who is, uh, doing the Youth Challenge Program. Uh, they will be here on the 29th for our work session on housing and homelessness and, and update there. All of the people who, uh, represented Kaiser on that task force were personally invited, uh, by me because, uh, they joined us in a year-long work to, uh, put together the strategic plan, which is adopt, was adopted and is now, yeah, being implemented, and just incredible work, uh, community-wide, bringing people together to effectively, uh, use our resources to serve people in a meaningful way. I went to the Thrift Store grand opening on the 22nd. The line was wrapped around the building. Um, a great partnership between the Thrift Store and the other businesses in the Kaiser Village Shopping Center. Uh, it was a wonderful way to introduce the, the Thrift Store to our Kaiser community of businesses and the Kaiser community at large. Congratulations to the Thrift Store. On Tuesday, the 25th, SCATS, which is the Salem-Kaiser Air Transportation Study, met and, uh, continuing work on the, um, Regional Transportation System Plan Update. Um, at the, uh, what day is that? Um, OMPAC is meeting next month, thus the Oregon Municipal Planning Organization Consortium, and that will be a day trip to Bend, uh, to do that work. The League of Oregon Cities Board launched my week with the, with the LOC. Um, it is my second-to-last board meeting, as, uh, I will be completing my three-year term on the board, and it has truly been a pleasure to watch the turnaround of that organization and the very high energy and engagement of the LOC. Um, I did a presentation on the 27th on the City Manager Evaluation Process at somebody's recommendation, um, and, um, I'll be sharing the PowerPoint. It's going to be posted. Um, it was a great conversation about what we do, how we do it, and, most importantly, what do, what do we get out of that process to ensure that it's, uh, good feedback, um, between the council and the city manager. There are other ways we might look for, look at doing that going forward. I did a presentation on the 28th, um, as Counselor Ryan mentioned, on League Legislative Priorities, and the one I spoke on is, no surprise, um, housing and homelessness. Uh, but that is one of six priorities that the League of Oregon Cities has, uh, identified as being of high interest to cities across the state. And then on the 29th, I joined , uh, four other mayors, the mayors of Astoria, Eugene, Madras, Portland, uh, one, two, three, four, I'm missing one. Um, no, I got them all, uh, talking about housing and homelessness and the homelessness, uh, symposium that was, uh, held on Saturday. Uh, that was videotaped. It is going to be on the League of Oregon Cities website, and there was some great stuff happening in communities across the state to effectively serve people as they move forward with their lives and rebuild trust and relationship, uh, out of homelessness and into lifelong success. So, um, I was very, very pleased to be able to talk about what we are doing as a community, um, for helping people who are housed, are homeless, and to get on to success. So, that was, um, awesome opportunity. Today, I went to the 50th anniversary of, or birthday party for Simonka Place. That was founded fifty years ago today, and so they've had, uh, visitors there all day long, uh, tourists, uh, opportunity to see what their plans are for the beautiful garden that they have on their, uh, facility, the hundreds of women that have been served there, uh, with their children, and helping them get on a path to lifelong success. So, congratulations and many thanks to Union Gospel Mission and the people who, uh, staff live at and work for the success of the women and children at Simonka House. Habitat for Humanity Hope Builders Breakfast is tomorrow morning. The SEDCOR Board, uh, Strategic Economic Development Corporation Board meets on Wednesday. EMWAC, which is the Mid-Wilamette Area Transportation, Area Commission on Transportation, meets Thursday, and the library book sale is Friday and Saturday, right here in our beautiful Civic Center. That's all I got. Counselor Anderson?
Okay, now that I've gotten my legs here under me, Madam Mayor. Uh, Kaiser Chamber Board meeting, uh, is a liaison to that. That is, I do have that coming up on October 10th, so I, looking at our, uh, upcoming agendas, I don't believe that, um, I'll have a chance to point that out. Um, and then also, just worthwhile pointing out, since Counselor Reed mentioned the, uh, the fact that McNary, about McNary Football, uh, we are playing Sprague this week, so turnout for...
I was going to say.
Heck, yeah. It's, I believe we're home, too, for that, so.
One of four, only four home games this year.
Yeah, yeah. Don't get me started on that. As someone who has a freshman at McNary, we're going to be on Thursday night, so we get to, uh, get the preview here for that. And then following week, we're actually going to Bend, um, October 11th, so that's where I'm going to be at. I will not be at the, uh, Community Conversation, um, at that time, mainly because we're over in Bend, so hopefully, it's not going to snow, and we're going to get sight, uh, waylaid or something like that, so, anyway. Oh, thank you. And final thing I just want to put in a pitch for, we've had some great mentions about, uh, various, uh, nonprofit groups that have, uh, had their events, and then those that are coming up. One I got to make sure to point out, uh, one that I've been actively and supportive for a long time now is Family Builder, Building Blocks. Uh, they have their Dream Builder Lunch coming up on October 18th. Um, that is a, an awesome event, uh, year in and year out, uh, for an absolutely outstanding, um, organization doing amazing work in this community. Thank you.
Then Saturday night is, um, the Beacons Event?
Yeah.
Counselor Herrera?
Yep.
Saturday night, okay.
And that's at the Colleton Center, and it involves every, every, uh, high school in the, in the area.
Every high school, okay.
And so, it's going to be a great event.
All right. Thank you very much. Youth Counselor Ferris?
I'll keep this brief since, uh, we all want to sort of wrap up at this moment. Um, the six-week grading period is approaching fast for students at McNary. Um, FAFSA applications just opened. Um, SAT applications are due for the November test. Um, PSAT, I believe, is next week, Wednesday, for students. Uh, seniors won the Potters Puff Game, but juniors put up a good fight this year. Um, homecoming was a success. Uh, we've had a lot of, uh, news from the football field, too, so, um, I would also like to, um, add on the volunteering, um, front. The National Honor Society, as well as FBLA, both have volunteered and will volunteer at Bowman Farms Harvest Festival over the course of the next few weeks, and I believe that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep. Um, CTEC, we're currently, um, at least in the, um, 3D design area, designing badges and tags to designate which students are where, so it's always interesting. Um, second years are developing a student film, and there are a bunch of things happening in, um, every single area.
Very good. Thank you very much. We get the benefit of reports on two schools, so thank you very much. Other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim?
Nothing as well. Nothing.
I hadn't come to you yet. I'm joking. Bill?
Nothing.
Nate?
I think we need to talk, and, and Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry that we did not connect before because of the other issues, but we have a calendar issue on the, uh, 22nd of October is the day that our consultants are available, but there is a conflict because of the, um, Little League Task Force meeting.
Yeah.
And so, um, I'm not sure how you would like to resolve that, and perhaps we should just talk. I, I'm fine with that if you can pull it off. Um, so, anyway, perhaps we should, but just know that the 22nd is a potential date for the, the presentation of the report on the Cost of Growth Education and Outreach Grant that we have, and so, um, it, there's just a lot of things in motion here, so.
Could I about go back to Public Works?
Back to Bill Lawyer.
The Bridge. Um, how's Dearborn?
It's coming along. Um, I would like to be able to report. We have a ribbon-cutting ceremony scheduled. However, we don't yet. Um, contractors poured the railing wall, concrete walls today. Um, that was a big step, so we'll see how that came out. They had a little bit of problem with, uh, mud that was delivered, so we'll see tomorrow if it created a problem or not. Um, and as soon as I have a date, I will share it with everybody. I just don't have it yet. I really believe it's going to be next week. I'd like to say Tuesday, but my instincts tell me Thursday. But as soon as I know, I'll get it out there.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have a question for Nate.
Nothing, did I? Thank you.
About the hotel. When is the new hotel going to open? Do you know?
It's a discussion we've had many times.
Then you might know the answer.
As soon as I find out, I'll let you know.
Okay, then. I just thought maybe you would know. Usually, you know these things.
We have not received a, uh, a final occupancy request yet, so that's all I know.
Okay, thank you. We are looking forward to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, was there anything we wanted to bring up regarding the Salem Airport?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, we received, okay, I received a call regarding, uh, from Brent DeHart regarding the Salem Airport and the adding the, um, air service, and, and I know some of us attended that meeting, informational meeting, a while back, and so what he's looking for is, uh, support from the council or a letter of recommendation that we, as a region, support, um, the air service, and so, he was willing to come testify. We could put it on the agenda. We can send a letter, whatever you deem appropriate, Madam Mayor.
All right. I think this would be a, a good for us to know what's happening. This is part of our, um, you know, economic region, and, uh, this is a group that is, uh, working on, has completed, uh, completed a study, is working on a remodel, uh, for commercial air service, so, um, if it's all right with council, uh, to invite, uh, Mr. DeHart and , uh, any of the folks involved with that, to, um, let us know what's going on, um, so then we can decide from there. Also, um, we would like to hear from the City of Salem, since it is their airport, um, uh, what they would like of us in, in terms of this effort. Counselor Anderson?
I want to thank, uh, Counselor Ryan for, for, um, bringing this forward. Um, this, I, I have been, and also involved, uh, through my role in the Chamber, Salem Chamber of Commerce Board, and, uh, I can tell you, they've really done a lot, uh, some yeoman's work in terms of trying to lay the groundwork for bringing, getting that, uh, air service back. Uh, they're really, in my opinion, making a really strong case for doing so. That's, uh, quite a bit different than what, uh, we all may have seen previously, um, but if we can get that established at Salem Airport, uh, the economic impact of this entire, not just Salem-Kaiser, but really all surrounding areas of, of the, kind of our region of the Wilamette Valley will... will be enormous. So, I'll definitely look forward to hearing from Mr. DeHart on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Would you like me to follow up with him, then, and invite him, or do we put it on the agenda? How does that work?
Chris, do you want to issue the invitation on the path of the council to come and talk? And then you've worked out with, with Tracy for whatever information he may want to get out to us in advance.
Sure.
Would that be all right? All right, and then you can craft it from the agenda from there. Thank you for offering to do so. Let him know that we'll be coming. All right. Thank you very much. Agenda input. Oh, written communications. I don't have anything additional that, other than those things which were put into the record during the discussion earlier. Agenda input, October 8th, we have rescheduled to October 29th for a topic on the Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative, and on October 8th, we urge and encourage everyone to go and enjoy the Open House with the Kaiser Fire District and the City of Kaiser Public Works.
Madam Mayor, I just want to thank you all so much for moving that in celebration of my birthday on the 29th of October, so, thank you.
Glad to do it. I seem to recall Council Freeman got to chair budget for her, her birthday, so.
She did.
Where's the party at? That's right.
Oh, now you tell me.
Yeah, bring the cake and mulleons.
I made green cookies, you know, so, we'll see.
All right. They're a little less messy on the, on the electronics. October 15th, we will meet at 7:00 PM in regular session, and then, as I mentioned earlier, October 29th, we will have the work session at 6:00 PM, and then hold the 22nd at 6:00 PM or 7:00? Okay, we have the holiday, when's the holiday meeting?
Okay, this is, I'm going to discuss this with Tracy. We're going to try to move it at 4:30.
Okay. The holiday, the holiday events meeting is also scheduled for the 22nd. So, we will stay, stay tuned for a time, we might have to go 6:30 rather than 6:00. So, everybody watch the announcement for the exact time, but hold it on that, that date. Crap. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Council Freeman.
Just to note, I won't, I'm not available on the 22nd for the lovely, I'm sorry, Nate, I know, but I'm, already have a prior commitment, so, sorry.
No growth for you.
No growth for me, exactly.
With that? Anything else for the good of the order?
That, and my microphone is stuck.
All right. The time is 9:56, and we are adjourned.